I think so. Yeah. Do John, do you, oh, do they have the exact language I need to read on that?
Oh, I do. I've got it for you. Is it, is it now? All right. Is Marilyn wearing a pink, uh, pink sweater? Okay. All right. I can't see it on me. See it on yours. Okay. Well, you're getting the double. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, Commissioner, I'm ready now.
Okay. Do you have that exact wording on that one?
Uh, yeah. Do you want it now?
Oh, that's right. That's right. That's right. This is one of those we have to be just exactly right, right?
So I actually typed it up and then I think you'll, I think you'd be best to just kind of this, and I wrote up the explanation for you. Then to turn our time over to, turn a few minutes over to Ryan and then, and then read that exactly like that. It's.
And then if there's no comments, just close the hearing?
Yeah, yeah, just like any other.
I think we're ready to go. I'd like to welcome everybody to our Iron County Commission meeting this Monday, the twenty-fourth day of April, two thousand twenty-three. Hope everyone had a great weekend. We appreciate your attendance today in our meeting. We'll begin this morning with a prayer offered by John Whitaker, our clerk. And following his prayer, Sam Woodhaller, County, Deputy County Attorney, will offer, or lead us in the pledge.
Our Father in heaven, we're grateful this morning that we have another beautiful spring day to enjoy. We're grateful that Thou didst answer our prayers regarding the snow on our mountains and the water in our reservoirs. We pray that it may come down safely. Please bless the weather that that it might be most beneficial for the aquifers and the safety of our dear citizens. We're grateful for the rain last night and that that we seem to survive it well. We're grateful to live in this land for the freedoms that we enjoy. We're grateful for the friendships and camaraderie that we, we enjoy. We're grateful to have a system of government where our leaders can be elected and, and have a representative government. And we pray for these representatives this morning that the discussions may be lively, that thy influence may be felt and that the best decisions for our county may be reached. We pray for our, our land. May we be able to exercise greater civility and patience and love with one another. May we be better citizens, we pray. We pray for our children and for our elderly, and we do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
May I join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Let's see, we will go ahead and look at approving the minutes dated April tenth, two thousand twenty-three.
I would move for approval of the April tenth, twenty twenty-three meeting minutes.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the April tenth, twenty twenty-three minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the warrants.
I would move for approval of claims for payment from April tenth, twenty twenty-three to April twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve claims for payment from April tenth to April twenty-third of two thousand twenty-three. Y'all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. We'll go to our departmental reports. Jared, are you here? Jared with IT. Thank you.
I appreciate Jared. He was just behind the, behind the wall helping me with the stream, so.
I was also, I was first on there. I told Jonathan, let's make sure we get this running first, then I'll hurry in. Anyway, so I'm, I'm in here. We're, we're doing really good as far as IT department goes. We're plugging along, having a lot of fun. Getting a few servers, getting ready to update those and some hardware change outs. We just got through doing our voiceover IP phone system, which, which was a huge project, but we're, we're really happy with it. It's going to save the county a lot of money making that transition, so we're, we're happy about that, too. Other than that, we're just kind of flying along normal. It's just put out fires and got some security cameras we'll put into play here in the next little bit, so.
Is that on the West Desert?
Uh, one of them is, yeah.
You got some, one of them in the West Desert?
For Bruce out there.
Yeah.
And then the others are for the fair building.
Oh, great.
And a couple of them, they're just older that we're replacing out, so.
Oh, great. Yeah. Super good.
So Jared, I have a question. My son, who's in the computer world, told me a couple of weeks ago, he said, Dad, if you need a new computer in the next few years, buy one now because they're probably going to go way up. Is that, have you heard much about with World of Ants and Chips and all those things? Is that, are you seeing that, or?
I haven't seen it yet. I've heard rumor of it going, and it makes sense, especially just with everything that's happening in the world.
Just wondering as a county if we ought to maybe stock up a little bit, you know, if it's, would help.
Yeah, we don't, we don't do that. We just kind of buy as we need them, so we plan for a year's worth of computers and go for it, so. But it's not a bad idea, too. When, when we knew COVID was first started, we went out, bought a whole bunch of computers, which really kind of saved us. So especially with that chip shortage and everything else, you just couldn't find them. So that helped a lot, but we did run short, too, so. So we, I like to keep an eye on things like that and hopefully stay a little bit ahead of it, but not put a burden on the budget.
Sure, continue to see a lot of phishing efforts, too. I mean, it seems like every day I get an email, sign into your account. And I don't know how, I don't know, you guys get those? Every single day I get an email. It's crazy.
I get a bunch.
It's daily and, and we do the best we can on our side to filter those out so they don't get hit, but all they do is change it up and then it just hits again. So education is definitely the best thing, and to be honest, our employees are really, really good at it.
That's great.
So anytime that there is a little bit of a hiccup, they'll let us know right away, and most of the time they haven't gone far enough to where we have to worry, so. So it's been, been really good. The education's there. We got smart.
We just had a, we just had a bad thing. I serve on the five county Board of Health or Behavior Health, well, Board of Health and Behavior Health, but we got hit with ransomware. I don't know if I told you that, but it was.
I think you mentioned it to me, yeah.
You know, luckily we had good backups and we didn't pay him any ransom.
Yeah.
But it was, it was a nightmare.
How much did they want?
A million dollars.
So they're getting smarter. They, they kind of look at your insurance policies and that becomes their baseline. So most people have cybersecurity now, so the dollar amounts, they used to be twenty to fifty thousand. Now they're just skyrocketing. They're just going way up through the roof, so. They can find that information really quick, too, so they know kind of where to hit you.
You feel like we're okay there? As good as we can be?
Good as we can be unless we really want to start throwing a lot more money out, which I wouldn't recommend. I mean, it's, it's something that you can't totally prevent just because of so many different. You know, it doesn't take much to get access, so you have to be, education is the biggest thing for employees and us more so than actual the hardware and all those kind of blocks, so.
I was going to say, and we get training on, you know, good computer hygiene and things to not do and things to do, and it's, it's an interesting world we live in.
That's the biggest thing. Email's the number one way to get in, so. Just click on a link and then it's done, so.
Appreciate all you guys do. Keep it going. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks, Jared.
Let's see, Treasure. Nicole.
Morning.
I have my hand out for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, well, good morning.
Morning.
All right, so just my usual boring reports. I'm sorry, but the first one is just the product sales, just to show what we've collected from January until now, and of course, it's our slower collection time, so we're just about three point nine million and but just still plugging along. The second papers just are what we've collected so far that just goes to the county and not to the entities, not to Cedar City, Brian had Perrin, but just to the county. And then our third is the pool cash report, just so that you know their status of our cash and we've had some big items. Of course, we had to parcelers last week and so it's taken a bit of our cash, which I really hate because the rates are so good, so I hate to lose any money. I just want to hoard all the money and keep it in there so that we can earn interest. The PTIF is up to four point eight last month, which was super. It was three point eight five the last time that I reported in January, so that's how much it's gone up just since January. So yeah, in our three two seven, just in the last year from March to March, we have one million one hundred that we have collected just in interest, so. So that is super awesome. We're loving that. We've been working with the fair a little bit, helping them set up a new vendor for their tickets and their cash and the events, and so we've been working with them and have been getting some payments in, and it seems like everything's working okay, so hopefully it's going to help them with their reporting and, and be good for their department, so. We have our county audit coming up, so hopefully all of our departments will be ready for that, May fifth and then I think it's the May fifth through May tenth. So they do randomly like to go through the departments and so that takes up all of my time and Luke's time during that time, so, but we're glad to have him come and we're always glad to do that. Our May tax sale, this year we started at the lowest number we have probably ever. We started at a hundred and fourteen. We're down to seventy-two. And we only have one home left and two properties that are valued over twenty-five thousand. All the rest of them are just Star Burl and Cedar Valley Acres, so. So Melanie's done a super good job on that and she works so hard and so we really, really try hard to reach out to everyone that we can, try to find everyone and get them informed. I don't know if Jared laughed, but big thanks to Kendall. He has the May tax sale map out there. So it's super easy. They can go click right on the property. It takes them right to the map where it is. He's just so awesome. He's so awesome. Our county just benefited so much getting him. He really is.
Absolutely.
So it's just great. He came in and worked with us and showed us how great it works and so.
He's talented.
Oh, he is. So huge appreciation to him. And that saves Kerry's office so much. People used to be going in, getting maps and really, I mean, it really, it saves all of us so much time.
Oh, yeah.
Them being able to go and look right at those properties, and so we appreciate that so much. Our outstanding taxes, today we're at like eight point six million. Last year, at the same time, we were at fourteen million, so. So we're doing okay. We're, we just keep trying. My budget is doing super good. Of course, I spend all my money at the end of the year, and so I look really good all year long until November, so. We're doing good and my office is doing super. I've got such great people that just work hard and don't give me any trouble, so I appreciate them. Any questions or?
Nope. Good job, Nicole.
All right.
Appreciate you.
All right, we'll go to our recorder. Kerry.
Good morning.
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 Um, I don't have any exciting news to tell you. Nothing exciting going on in our office. Our recordings are down because, you know, the real estate market's down right now. We had two thousand seven hundred and sixty-one recordings, a thousand and sixty-four transfer documents, and only nine plots last quarter, so. Part of that's also the time of year, right? People don't develop when it's snowing.
Bad winter.
So muddy. I think most of these excavators take a few months off.
So I mean, that will pick up a little, but we're just a lot slower.
Yeah.
Everything's good, though. My budget's on track. Our GIS map's up and running. Things are good there. And we, too, appreciate Kendall, but you know, when I started the idea of switching to GIS, I knew it would benefit my office and it has. It's just so much more efficient. But really, it's a big benefit to a lot of departments because of what Kendall's able to do with that map now. I mean, it's the assessor and the tax cell and boating stuff and roads and the building department. I mean, it's, it's a really big thing for the county, so I'm excited about that.
That's awesome.
And if you guys have any questions or need anything from me?
We probably ought to thank Paiute County for us getting him from.
They wouldn't pay him enough, but.
Uh, but we love him. Yep.
Yep. Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Kerry.
Moving right along. Commissioner Blake, you want to go next?
Sure. We've all been really involved, multi-days and hours, as has been the case recently, on moving forward with plans with our jail. We've had some construction meetings with both the sheriff's office, the architect, the architectural firm, the contractors, the commissioners, everybody involved. I think those have been really beneficial and they, we've really gotten a lot done. Also with the contractor, I believe that's on the agenda for today. We did meet, and we've talked several times about getting, making sure that we get the word out with what's going on. John and I and the sheriff had an opportunity to meet with a PR firm this last week. Kind of got some basic information and some feedback and, and we're gonna, we're gonna move forward with that, just to make sure that we get all the information out there to the public. Oh, gosh, there's been a bunch of little things. I had the opportunity on Saturday to cook pancakes with the Home Builders Association for their falls, or their spring home and garden show. I don't know how I get, I just get told every year that I'm doing that and to bring my griddle, so. But that's always a lot of fun to, to rub shoulders with that community. All the proceeds went to a couple of folks that have been diagnosed with cancer over the last year, so that's always really helpful. The one thing that I got even more this year than usual, I had several developers and contractors as we were cooking pancakes express how much they appreciate the county and the building department. Talked about how smooth the just how smooth the whole process is and how much common sense there is in that department. There was one individual that, you know, specifically said, I really want you to, to recognize Terry Palmer, who's our building, building official. Says, I've had a structure that my dad built thirty-five years ago. It's never been finished. Terry came out and looked at it and basically said, well, it's still strong after thirty-five years, so, you know.
Finish it up, huh?
Finish it up. You know, we'll, we'll do this inspection. We'll do that inspection, but it's, said just the, the he walked out of there, he walked in and said, it only took me five minutes. Says, I, I filled out one paper. Chelsea wasn't busy at the time, so she filled out my other paper for me. Said it was just a super smooth process and was really appreciative of, of all the inspectors and everything that's going on in that department, so. That's, that's good to hear, and I, that's, and I heard it from two or three different, different contractors, how much they appreciate us, so. I thought I would pass that on. I've been meeting with fire a lot, the different agencies, and then we have kind of our official pre-fire season kickoff today at two o'clock. Kind of sends us into that. We've had a ton of flooding questions. Been telling people we have sand and bags in our conics. We do have filled bags at the, at the time. They're kind of behind the fence. Cedar City put all their filled bags out and they were gone in a matter of minutes. So we've got some reserves for if hopefully it doesn't, but if the emergency hits, but we do have sand and bags. We've put two different shovels out there. The first one was stolen and the second one was broken in half. So it's now bring your own shovel to, to the sandbag filling.
And you can fill your own.
You can fill your own, but please bring your own shovel. We've, we've lost two so far.
They say if they fill their own, they won't take as many because they it's work. It is work, but it's work for somebody.
And so far, we couldn't have better weather patterns for what we've got in the mountains.
Absolutely.
We've, you know, between, between emergency management, the engineering commissioners, everybody's keeping an eye on the water and it's really it could not be coming at a better pace. Fingers crossed, so. But if, you know, when it, when it comes to, if it does come down, I, I think we're as ready as we can be for it. And there's been a, you know, Commissioner Cousins has put in a ton of work, being over the, the engineering department. Everybody's really pitched in and hopefully we're in good shape, but that's really all I've got.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Wood?
Okay, on the seventeenth of April, we had a CIB County, that's a Community Impact Board. It's a monies that you can, that, that the counties can get. You know, it's hard for, for rural counties to come up with, with monies for big projects. And so we prioritize that. It was the mayors, the county commissioners and five county AOG talked about. The problem is with that monies is that we Paul's talked about before, Commissioner Cousins has talked about before, is that that, that money comes from energy royalties and, and leases on the public lands and we get part of it and the federal government gets part of it, and that money is very helpful to the counties. Well, since they've shut down a lot of that because of the administration, the Biden administration, it has, it has put a damper on that, so there isn't the money there. So those kind of policies don't only, it, it hurts our communities and, and I, you know, I want to stress that. It really hurts our communities. Not just because of the gas prices and all of that, but other things, too, because of those royalties and that, but you know, the, the, well, like Perrin and Canaraville, smaller communities like that. It's really hard. They just don't have the monies for big projects, so that way, if they can get grants or even borrow money for low interest, it's, it's such a, a great thing for, for us and they just don't have very much money in it right now, but anyway. On the twentieth, we met about the railroad out on Iron Springs. We had one of the cars that go out there to Wechol, American Corp., I keep calling it Wechol, but anyway, it we're trying to come up with a solution. One of the cars got hit by the train. The trains come and go and, and you never know when. It's just when Union Pacific can come get the ore to take. And so we're trying to come up with, we'd like to have arms eventually, but for right now, just to make it safe, we put stop signs. And so we're trying to work through that, and that's that I think is going to be a really great partnership with BZI Steel, Utah Iron, and then of course, Merricorp and then the county. And, and they have, they have been really gracious to say they will come, you know, help us find, fund that or whatever it takes so that we can make that crossing safer. I don't, didn't have a whole lot more, other than our roads are all tore up, and I say, have said this all winter. The county roads, I mean, we have had a lot of flooding issues that we've had to go clean and help with, with the engineers department. We will get to those roads. Just be patient and we'll try to get to those, yeah, that, that are so tore up. That much moisture this winter, we just haven't had that for quite a few and people forget. And so we'll, we'll get those, to those as soon as we can. That's all I had.
Got a few things. I attended the Joint Highway Committee meeting in St. George's this, this last week. Commissioner Whitney is no longer serving on that. I replaced his position. They asked if I would serve, and that's, that's an agency, I'm still learning about it, that administers federal highway funds. One of the, an example of that is the new overpass over I fifteen on Coal Creek Road, that nice new overpass. That was like an eight, eight point some odd million dollar. Eight hundred, or eight million dollar project and and so those are the kind of projects that, that we administer and prioritize in, in those things. So that was, that was an interesting assignment that I'm learning about. I met with, we're looking with this potential runoff and, and how it's going to be. We've the Woodbury split, so there's a, just, just for, just for informational purposes, just for the public. If you go to the Central Iron County Water Conservancy District website, you can go to the menu and click on Flow Map. And we have live streaming of all of the water in Iron County, so if there's Union Field Irrigation Company, there's a, there's a flow meter and SCADA that reports that live, so you can I, if I'm worried at midnight when I wake up and worried about flooding, I can look on that and see what the cubic feet per second is coming out of the canyon. I can see what's going into Western Rock Recharge. I can look at the Union Field. Look at the Southwest Irrigation. We can look at all those numbers, and it's really interesting to go to that website in case you, as the public, want to know. So if we have just an example, we feel like our flood channels will handle at least a thousand cubic feet per second. And so right there by the bicentennial ball fields in the skate park, there's a structure there called the Woodbury Split, and it splits the water sixty forty. Sixty percent goes north and forty percent goes to Quichapah. And so if we have sixteen hundred cubic feet per second coming out of Cedar Canyon, for example, we're going to have about a thousand going north and about six hundred going, going, going south to Quichapah. And so just, if you guys want to know and and, and if you're worried about something, you can get on that. Really, really handy tool that we use, and it's, it's been a lot of work over the years to get that up and going, and much appreciation of the Water Conservancy, Conservancy District for the, for putting that up. But we're looking for everywhere we can to siphon water off of these, off of Coal Creek when the flooding starts and the runoff starts, like, like was said in our prayer and Commissioner Blake, we're continue to hope and pray for, you know, the, the elements to be tempered as such, so that comes down slowly and in a, in a good fashion. But I met with Western Rock, the parent company of Staker Parsons. They've just been wonderful over the years to work with us as a county and the cities. There's another gravel pit over by Airport Road that Cedar City owns, and I met with them, and at first they told me they were going to be mining in there this year, and we probably couldn't put water in that for recharge, but they then later called me and said, hey, you guys go ahead. We're going to just start a new pit. We'll just dig another hole. You guys go ahead and use it. And I just can't can't tell you how much we appreciate that company for working with us. So we're actually digging a spillway from the original Schmidt pit, what we call the Schmidt pit. We're digging a spillway. It's about three hundred feet. I was over there Saturday, finish up a section of that and put in some culvert and some rip rap to drop, and we've got to pipe it down the, down the bank. If you when you, you can't just run water into a gravel pit. It cuts. It cuts really bad, and we've learned that by, by experience. So we've got to pipe that down with culvert. And so we'll, we're working on that this week. We've got our, we've got Tracy Felton with the Water Conservancy District helping with that, and we appreciate him. So we'll, we'll have three pits. We'll have the Schmidt pit, which will overflow into the county pit, which has gotten pretty big over the years. And then it'll actually overflow into that other pit. So those three pits combined will be about equivalent to the Western Rock pit, which which in two thousand nineteen, we actually put about nine thousand acre feet of water. And if you look at the cost of water rights, if you did that, we don't get that consistently because we've had some dry years, obviously, but if you were to do that consistently, that's millions and millions of dollars worth of water that we're putting back in our aquifer that we can pump back out and use, and use, and so it's, it's really an exciting thing because that water would normally go out to Quichapah because there's so much clay underneath the ground that it, it won't allow it to perk in the aquifer and it just evaporates. So it's, it's really nice to be able to put that where we can use it again. I actually did a presentation. where we can use it again. Um, I actually did a presentation for the Board of Realtors, uh, on the twelfth, uh, talking about flooding and what they can tell their clients, how to prepare. Appreciate Commissioner Blake talking about sandbags and those things. Uh, we've, we've worked really hard on this. I was on the phone last night with Rich Wilson, our county engineer, who was watching these storms come through, wondering how much snow those, those rains could possibly melt and bring down too fast. But, uh, we're always watching. We've, we've got, uh, our track, we have a track operator that works full time that maintains our, our flood channels. And I know some have asked for a, a maintenance schedule. We really don't have a written schedule. We just, we go out and inspect and as we see things that need to be done, we do it. And that's kind of our schedule. We just, we do it as we need. We, we, we inspect them all the time. Uh, there's a couple, we, we, we realize there's a couple of areas that, that, uh, have come up that we probably need a little work and we're going to have, uh, our excavator go out and, and work on those. He's done a lot of work over in the Paragona area with Little Creek that comes out, washed out some roads. He's put some new culverts in and they're working the road department there. Had, last week, we had our five county, uh, Board of Health and Steering Committee meetings. Those went well. Uh, lots, lots of things we discussed in those. Um, appreciate Dan Jessen. Dan Jessen, uh, left us. He used to be our audit auditor in the county and did a wonderful job. But he went to work for Parowan City and he's, he's had a track hole. He's a farm kid that knows how to run equipment. So he's been out working a lot of, a lot of these flood channels in Parowan. We've been working with him and, and, uh, we appreciate Ryan Riddle, who with state money bought a track hole with the mulching head on a bull hog head that we can, and, and we've been able to use that machine to go up and down the canal here, or the channel here in Parowan to mulch some of those trees that could be problematic to catch, you know, um, trees and other debris and cause some flooding. So that's been good. We feel like that's coming right along in the Parowan area. Um, that's one other thing. Uh, we've got our Western Interstate Region Conference coming up this, this, this next month with, uh, with our Naco in St. George. I've been working with some of the leadership on that conference and what we need to do to prepare for that. But that's all I could really think of last night is us putting this list together. So with that, uh, is there any, anything else from the commission? Are we good?
No, I, I did, on my way today, I saw a car coming out of, uh, Parowan Canyon with about four inches of snow on the roof. So.
So it was nice. They got snow.
Not that we need more snow, but it's better it's not raining in the mountain right now and sending it down. So.
It's snow yesterday. I saw cameras.
With that hailstorm that hit, I don't know if you got, did you guys get hell over here in Parowan last night? Did you? That storm hit Cedar and it was loud. So.
Yeah, we had pea sized hail at my house.
Well, we'll, we'll adjourn until, uh, ten o'clock and then resume our meeting at ten. Thank you.
Wow, that was a record.
Yeah.
It's how it is. We're either fast or twenty over.
I don't know what.
You want to talk more, Nicole?
Are you sure?
We're just, we're, we're about three, three dollars lower than everybody else. Or the state just can't hire people. We know. We're, we're, we're down on our, we don't have, we're down on landfill. Our, our road department doesn't, they're losing people.
I've got several presentations to make up you act this week plus I'm in charge of the meeting. So. But maybe, maybe we could, when, when you have none. But I don't think this week's, I've got to leave, I've got to leave Wednesday at noon one. Maybe we could get together Wednesday morning. Is there a job meeting this weekend? We'll start a file, but that's, that's all we'll do.
How you doing?
It depends, it depends on where, what you're looking for.
Okay.
If you're looking for like permitting and other building department information, just send me questions that you can come to me. But they would be responsible for issue. How much time it's going to take. Uh, statute gives us ten days. They maybe get it done sooner, just a bit of a week. But. They can charge a fee, uh, but they can waive that. I don't think they usually do, but I don't want to disappoint you today. So yeah, just, uh, I would send it to Chelsea Boxwell. She's the administrative assistant.
Okay, thanks.
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's different.
Flood stuff down.
I see these CDLs. We just, they just, they're, they're CDL drivers. And we just had the two biggest days he's ever had the other day. He doesn't have enough employees. He can't find, he can't find CDL people to drive trucks. And then he's had, applied to run these million dollar programs. He destroys them. They don't, they don't know what to do. He can't put a, open up an operator on a million. So it's just. This was on the agenda a couple of months ago. And we pulled it. And we pulled it. I said, wait, let's see. Cause I've heard there's some layoffs. I heard the excavators are slowing down. The market hasn't changed. I thought it might maybe and we could, so we went to a state. Carol and I were in that room. We went around the room. It just supplied the land. This is prospect. I'm not going to come for that. I can go.
You want to go?
No, I've got, I've got something to do. But, but I will, I will look at it. But, but also there's.
If they call it a entitlement, if we would have put that much money into savings account. We got, we got, we got a road. There's a big crack in the road and it literally fallen. Doesn't have the dews to fix it. And we got road repairs all over the county. We don't, we have to have roads. Those are two pretty critical. Our most experienced driver right now.
Did you get it?
That's not what they make us say.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. We appreciate all those who have joined our meeting. Continue on with our agenda. In the public hearing section, this item number one is a second CDBG public hearing that we need to hold. This hearing is called to allow all citizens to provide input concerning the project that is awarded under the two thousand twenty-three Community Development Block Grant Program. Iron County has amended its capital investment plan and decided to apply for funds on behalf of the Newcastle Fire Station Fire Engine. The application was successful in the regional trading and ranking process for an urban interface type three fire engine in the amount of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, specifically a BME freight liner. And we'll turn some time over to Ryan Riddle, our fire warden, to talk about this.
Good morning, Commissioners. Just to give an update and a kind of history on what happened with this, this project. Newcastle Fire Department's current type three wildland urban interface is a nineteen seventy-five international. That piece of equipment had some sort of catastrophic electrical failure. It won't start. There's significant problems with the electrical system. It doesn't meet any of the National Fire Protection Administration, I guess, codes for, for fire apparatus. Doesn't meet most Utah OSHA requirements for fire apparatus. So the, the truck has, has served the Newcastle area for a long time. It was a great truck, but it's beyond its, its time limits. And we felt it was best to try and get that apparatus replaced as soon as possible. And so by doing so, we've applied through the CDBG process to replace that apparatus with basically the current or the, the existing criteria for a type three engine. Basically, we're just replacing the exact same truck. We're just updating it to this year. There's a lot of issues with availability for fire apparatus. We reached out through the bidding process and only had one manufacturer that was able to meet the criteria and timeframes that CDBG put on us. They wanted that truck delivered within three months of ordering. We do have a truck secured and hope to, to finish the process and move forward with, with getting that apparatus here. I'm hoping to see it mid to late June, so if not sooner. So it's a stock unit that the manufacturer actually had in process. So we were able to pick it up and be a great asset to not only the Newcastle area, but Iron County in a whole, as well as to our mutual aid agreements. It helps out the surrounding five counties, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, we, we've got a new fire station out there for the folks in the West Desert, and I think that's, this will be an awesome addition, so. So I'll go ahead, we'll go ahead and do the public hearing and then, and then let you wrap up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll now declare the second CDBG public hearing open. If you have comments on this, please state your name and share your comments, questions or concerns.
Sheriff, Sheriff Ken Carpenter. You know, one of my roles by state law as a sheriff is wildland fire. And, you know, when we look at the number of wildland fires that we've had out in the West Desert and around Pine Mountain, this is an essential piece of, of equipment for us to be prepared to protect homes and property out in that area. So, you know, just going along with Ryan here, I, I fully support and, and defend that position. I think it's absolutely essential for us to obtain that equipment. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments?
I would just like to say, I serve on the steering, five county steering committee, and I'd like to publicly express gratitude for that committee for voting for this emergency declaration because they didn't have to. And, but they supported Iron County, and I really appreciate. I know that Washington County, they were all supportive, but Washington County especially, you know, we have a great relationship with Washington County with Enterprise being right there in, in the vicinity, and they were very supportive of this action. So we really appreciate them, you know, supporting this as well.
A lot of people put a lot of effort into this in a short amount of time, and, and I, I agree. I would also like to express my appreciation to the CDBG and the board and all the people that work behind the scenes on this. This is a, this is a big deal and serves a lot of people, so.
So I guess seeing no other comments, we'll close the public hearing. And, and do we need to vote on this? Is this just a hearing?
No, I don't think so. You, sorry, you, you voted to make the application.
Okay.
But yeah, that's, this is just to receive comment.
Okay. Do we get everything?
Yes.
Exactly right?
Yep.
Okay, we have, these are, these federal funds are very.
Specific.
Very stick, stickler about getting everything just right. So Reed, Reed can vouch for that. Okay, thank you, Ryan. We'll go to item number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval of proposed amendments to the Iron County Transportation Plan. Study Areas Eight and Eight A, Westview Drive and adjacent areas. And this is, this is based on recommendations from the Iron County Planning Commission and Reed and Rich.
Good morning, Commissioners. We'll just do a brief introduction this morning, a little bit about where we're at. This map, I don't know if it'd be helpful to swing that out a little bit. Can you folks see that all right? If we. That's a little better? Yeah. I think, I think that'll be helpful. Area eight and eight A are down in the bottom off of Westview Drive. Westview Drive specifically is eight A and eight is the areas to the west of that out to the Belt Route. And we've talked about area seven and nine and adopted those the last time we were here. The Planning Commission held the hearing and we've, we've really appreciated the neighbors in the Westview area. They've been really involved and we have gotten some good feedback from them and some good input and some good ideas, and I think as a result will be a better plan. And what we'll do is just go through specifically some of the roads in that area. I will say most recently, within this, the last couple of weeks, we've had more discussion on a, on a link going into and through this area off to the east from, from the Cedar City area, and I'll show you on, a little bit on the map. But we've had a lot of involvement in the last week, specifically with the property owners in that area, talking about trying, and with the city and trying to figure out how best to make connections there between the city and the county. A lot of these areas aren't affected by that discussion, and we'll talk about those, but some of them are, and we want to make sure we're clear on that. Rich, you want to talk about a little bit, just some of the general background, and I'll just flip through the slides.
Okay, so we look here, we see the general annexation plan that this area that we're talking about is in the county. It's county controlled. It's, it's down in that light green area just to the west of the dotted line. Let's go to the next slide. So what we try to do is we try to balance the mobility with the access. Interstates are really mobile, very limited access. Colasacs have great access, no mobility. So we're trying to hit the sweet spot where we come in between the two, particularly when we have growth. Let's go down to the next slides. What we're looking at is increasing the ability on Westview Drive for a total access plan, meaning that not just will traffic be able to use it, but so will those who are foot traffic or, or other things besides vehicular traffic. We want to make a, a ribbon path that would serve for the joggers and stuff. What we have is a study that shows that it's a pretty heavily used area that way, both with bicycle and with walkers and, and others who are using the side of the road. And as you've driven it, you know, it's, it's not particularly inviting to that. There is a dirt trail there, but it would be nice if it were a paved ribbon. But I'd like to see us keep in mind that it would.
That's, that's not what they make us say.
Please up.
Uh, let me double check.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay, I think we're ready to go. We appreciate all those who have joined our meeting. Continue on with our agenda in the public hearing section. This item number one is a second CDBG public hearing that we need to hold. This hearing is called to allow all citizens to provide input concerning the project that is awarded under the 2023 Community Development Block Grant Program. Iron County has amended its capital investment plan and decided to apply for funds on behalf of the Newcastle Fire Station Fire Engine. The application was successful in the regional trading and ranking process for an urban interface type three fire engine in the amount of $350,000, specifically a BME freight liner. And we'll turn some time over to Ryan Rettle, our fire warden, to talk about this.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you.
Morning.
Just to give a, an update and a kind of history on what happened with this, this project. Newcastle Fire Department's current type three wildland urban interface is a 1975 International. That piece of equipment had some sort of catastrophic electrical failure. It won't start. There's significant problems with the electrical system. It doesn't meet any of the National Fire Protection Administration, I guess, codes for, for fire apparatus. Doesn't meet most Utah OSHA requirements for fire apparatus. So the, the truck has, has served the Newcastle area for a long time. It was a great truck, but it's beyond its, its time limits. And we felt it was best to try and get that apparatus replaced as soon as possible. And so by doing so, we've applied through the CDBG process to replace that apparatus with basically the current or the, the existing criteria for a type three engine. Basically, we're just replacing the exact same truck. We're just updating it to this year. There's a lot of issues with availability for fire apparatus. We reached out through the bidding process and only had one manufacturer that was able to meet the criteria and timeframes that CDBG put on us. They wanted that truck delivered within three months of ordering. We do have a truck secured and hope to, to finish the process and move forward with, with getting that apparatus here. I'm hoping to see it mid to late June, so if not sooner. So it's a stock unit that the manufacturer actually had in process. So we were able to pick it up and be a great asset to not only the Newcastle area, but Iron County in a whole, as well as to our mutual aid agreements. It helps out the surrounding five counties, so.
Okay.
Any questions?
No, we, we've got a new fire station out there for the folks in the West Desert, and I think that's, this will be a, an awesome addition, so.
Yeah, yeah.
So I'll go ahead, uh, we'll go ahead and do the public hearing and then, and then let you wrap up.
Okay.
I'll, I'll now declare the second CDBG public hearing open. If you have comments on this, please state your name and share your comments, questions, or concerns.
Sheriff, Sheriff Ken Carpenter. You know, one of my roles by state law as a sheriff is wildland fire. And, uh, you know, when we look at the number of wildland fires that we've had out in the West Desert and around Pine Mountain, this is an essential piece of, of equipment for us to be prepared to protect homes and property out in that area. So, you know, just going along with Ryan here, I, I fully support and, and defend that position. I think it's absolutely essential for us to obtain that equipment, so thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? I would just like to say, I serve on the steering, five county steering committee, and I'd like to publicly express gratitude, gratitude for that committee for voting for this emergency declaration because they didn't have to and, uh, but they supported Iron County, and I really appreciate. I know that Washington County, they were all supportive, but Washington County especially. You know, we have a great relationship with Washington County, with Enterprise being right there in, in the vicinity, and they were very supportive of this action, so we really appreciate them, you know, supporting this as well, so.
A lot of people put a lot of effort into this in a short amount of time, and, and I, I agree. I would also like to express my appreciation to the CDBG and the board and all the people that work behind the scenes on this. This is a, this is a big deal and serves a lot of people, so.
So I guess seeing no other comments, we'll close the public hearing, and, and do we need to vote on this? Is this just a hearing?
No, I don't think so.
You, sorry, you, you voted to make the application.
Okay.
Um, but yeah, that's, this is just to receive comment.
Okay. Did we get everything?
Yes.
Exactly right?
Yep.
Okay, we have, these are, these federal funds are very, uh,
Specific.
Very stick, stickler about getting everything just right, so Reed, Reed can vouch for that. Okay, thank you, Ryan. We'll go to item number two, public hearing discussion and possible approval of proposed amendments to the Iron County Transportation Plan. Study Areas Eight and Eight A, Westview Drive and adjacent areas. And this is, uh, this is based on recommendations from the Iron County Planning Commission, and Reed and Rich.
Morning Commissioners.
Morning.
We'll just do a brief introduction this morning, a little bit about where we're at. This map, I don't know if it'd be helpful to swing that out a little bit. Can you folks see that all right? I think. Uh, I think that'll be helpful. Area Eight and Eight A are down in the bottom off of Westview Drive. Westview Drive specifically is Eight A, and Eight is the areas to the west of that out to the Belt Route. And we've talked about Area Seven and Nine and adopted those the, the last time we were here. The Planning Commission held a hearing, and we've, we've really appreciated the neighbors in the Westview area. They've been really involved, and we have gotten some good feedback from them and some good input and some good ideas, and I think, uh, as a result, will be a better plan. And what we'll do is just go through specifically some of the roads in that area. I will say, most recently, within this, the last couple of weeks, we've had more discussion on a, on a link going into and through this area off to the east from, from the Cedar City area, and I'll show you on, a, a little bit on the map. But we've had a lot of involvement, uh, in the last week, specifically with the property owners in that area, talking about trying, and with the city, and trying to figure out how best to make connections there between the city and the county. A lot of these areas aren't affected by that discussion, and we'll talk about those, but, uh, some of them are, and we want to make sure we're clear on that. Rich, you want to talk about a little bit, just some of the general background, and I'll just flip through the slides.
Okay, so we look here, and we see the general annexation plan that, uh, this area that we're talking about is in the county. It's county-controlled, it's, it's down in that light green area just to the west of the dotted line. Let's go to the next slide. So what we try to do is we try to balance the mobility with the access. Interstates are really mobile, very limited access. Colasacs have great access, no mobility. So we're trying to hit the sweet spot where we come in between the two, particularly when we have growth. Let's go down to the next slides. What we're looking at is increasing the ability on Westview Drive for a total access plan, meaning that not just will traffic be able to use it, but so will those who are foot traffic or, or other things besides vehicular traffic. We want to make a, a ribbon path that would serve for the joggers and stuff. What we have is a study that shows that it's a pretty heavily used area that way, both with bicycle and with walkers and, and others who are using the side of the road. And as you've driven it, you know, it's, it's not particularly inviting to that. There is a dirt trail there, but it would be nice if it were a paved ribbon. But I'd like to see us keep in mind that it would be better if there was a, uh, a vegetative separation between vehicular traffic and those who are using that path. Let's go to the next slide.
Let me, let me just step back and just mention that you'll recall the last time we, we talked about transportation update. We're following on the heels of a transportation master plan that was done in Cedar City and Eneek and the surrounding area, and trying to integrate those, and a lot of these maps and the things that you see came from that study in terms of level of service that we'll talk about in just a minute. But it also had an active transportation element, and that's what we're talking about with pedestrian hiking, biking. We're not just looking at vehicular mobility, but also active transportation. And so those are things that we want to consider. And as Cedar City and Eneek adopted those master plans for active transportation and vehicular transportation, we want to try to incorporate and make sure that we're accommodating that way too as it comes out of the city into the county and vice versa, so that we can have better connections between those unincorporated and incorporated communities.
Thank you, Reed. I, I appreciate that because it's really important that we don't bottleneck and have stops where the ci- city is planning, and suddenly the county hasn't dovetailed into that. So this is what those type of things look like when you have an active transportation plan. The preferred one is protection level one, which is on the far right side of that slide, where you have, at, at the very least, you have a bike path that is separated by a, a white line, and then you have other, uh, the middle one shows some kind of protective barrier, but the best one is when your traffic is, uh, has a vegetative separation. What I'm looking at would probably give us about 15 feet of separation, allowing for, uh, already utilities, infrastructure to stay in place. This would be the vision of what we'd like to see along Westview Drive, for example, and other type of roads that are not dissimilar to Westview, but where we have, have a really cooperative and inviting situation where the traffic can have a turn lane, the bikers and pedestrians. We know that there's a, a future plan for schools further to the south along Westview Drive, and that's been a voice concern and a, and an important concern to the neighbors, that we consider that we're going to have schoolchildren and others. And in order to facilitate that and invite them to perhaps walk or to ride their bikes to school, it would be wonderful to have crossings that are safe as well as a bicycle path. This is what's really a driving, this whole master transportation plan is the, is the growth. This is where we see from the study that was done by Cedar City and Eneek that, that population is going to grow, and it centers right down there in that area. Then we see that the, uh, it, the, the growth of, uh, employment will stay where it's at, the center of town. So all those people that are going to move to the southwest of the valley are going to need to get back to work. So levels of service, they're graded on an A to F rating. Currently, right now, there's only, uh, all the, all the transportation in, now, is, is primarily green. One of our concerns is that in less than seven years, from 800 South back to 56, we'll have a D rating. What that means is congestion will have increased to the point that they will be stopping or be delayed at stoplights longer than perhaps, uh, one cycle light. In 10 more years or in the next 17 years, that will fall to an F rating, and that's pretty serious. That's what we have right now. All those who have ever gone or tried to go, go to Walmart or Home Depot on a Saturday morning, they are experiencing F rating right now, where they have to cycle through a few stoplights even to progress forward. And then we have what, what that last slide showed. Let's back up just a second. What that last shows, slide shows is to 800 South, it becomes an F rating, and then to 1500 South, it becomes a D rating. Then by 2050, go to that slide, we see that it's an F rating all the way to what people might know better as 4B, the new development down there. And, uh, we just received information, I did over the weekend, and perhaps you saw it too, Reed, that a developer has purchased that property west of 4D, I mean of 4B.
4B?
4B, uh, excuse me, 4B, I think it was 1,200 acres, and, uh,
To the west or to the south?
To the west, so. And they will be looking for some expansion in there, which will just follow the pattern we're expecting, which is, uh, growth and then a need to travel out of the area.
To the Belt Route?
It will go beyond the, yes, that.
Over to Quichapaw.
It's all the way, yeah.
On, on both sides of the Belt Route then.
Correct. So there will be some relief there when they get that through, and we show that on the master plan as being carried through and out of Belt, out of 4B to continue. I, uh, the city did, because that's in the city limits, 4B is, but they show, um, that as well. So the purpose of a master plan is that we don't have to rethink this after there's already homes or development, that when it, it becomes a part of the conditional use permit for the development, that they reserve corridors and, and roads. So we get to, uh, one of the concerns right here, some of them aren't, aren't as controversial. If you look at Center Street, that is planned by the city to come through the county. The county is the white, the gray is the city. And so they have planned for Center Street to come over from the arena off of Cody over to, uh, Westview or, or Westview Drive there, just above, uh, the nursery. That's this slide on the left. The other slide, which is, is a different slide of concern to many people in the neighborhood. Initially, that's, I, I just named it, it's the jump over road because it jumps over that mountain right there. Uh, it isn't an official name, but it was initially considered to come and dead end right at the top, uh, there at the left. If, if you don't mind, I'll, I'll walk over and point. So this is called Eagle, Eagle Drive, and that's on a plan of the developer. And it was to come in here and come down here. The issue with that is that is a 30-plus degree grade. It's over there by the water tanks, and it drops down. So we, with the Planning Commission, discussed going north. And that's that other line. Right there. Now, the issues that arise with that is the developer to the north has, has made it, uh, very clear that he does not desire to have a road come through his subdivision there. And, and so the problem would be, or the issue would be, that we might put that on our master plan, but it doesn't go anywhere. I believe that it would be irresponsible to use the, the southern road because of the steepness. And to just simply put it on the map doesn't make a lot of sense when its practicalities are very limited.
So I, this, this, this map just shows the area from the, the county zoning map, and the two little lots right there in the middle that are kind of yellowish colored are the, are the properties of Scott Bird that we were just looking at. And you can see the line that goes through and kind of goes into the subdivision, Cross Hollow Hills, or goes north up into Old Sorrel subdivision. And then the other, you know, just to show a little larger context of how the area lays out. And so you can see where that fits in. Part of the concern, uh, in, in some of these other images, I appreciate, uh, came from Dane Levitt from Iron Horse Development. Uh, this is the Old Sorrel master plan that shows the bottom left-hand corner is where that road would have historically come into that development, on the bottom left corner. A little further west, yeah, right in that area. And the city, that's the way the old master plan showed the road going through. The developer, uh, and the city decided that it didn't need to go through there, took it off that master plan, and that's when they turned it over into Cross Hollow Drive, which is down further, a little bit further south. So what we're looking at, this is the way that, uh, the road would have originally gone, clear from, uh, back of Home Depot down to the bottom over by the I-15. Could have gone clear through the area and down through the property and then into, uh, Old Sorrel subdivision. But the neighbors at Old Sorrel and the developer didn't want it to go through there, and so the city changed their master plan and no longer put it there, but then put it right into, to the end of Cross Hollow Drive, which is the, the steep slope that Rich was talking about. We've looked at a couple of other alternatives and, and possibilities and ways that you can connect Cross Hollow Road, which is the one that goes from Walmart out to, and, and down to the bottom where the drainage basin right there, Silver Silo is right there on the right, and that's a big drainage basin on the left right there. There's a good route, uh, as indicated in the blue right here, that could connect over into Hidden Hills, uh, Drive, Hidden Hills subdivision, could be routed around the drainage and then to south again to hit the road going down through the middle of the subdivision. Couple of good alternatives. This is the end of Hidden Hills Drive where the road could connect into that, but, uh, the city has changed the plan for that. This was also another proposal to just show how subdivisions can connect. This is, uh, an important consideration in our master plan because that's the edge of the city boundary right there. And when this old, the Cross Hollow Hills subdivision was built, 1950 South, which is the one run across the bottom and then has a little, uh, cup shape in there, this dead ends right there up in the canyon. It's a problematic, uh, situation as it exists currently because people go in there and not knowing that it doesn't go through, and they've got a trailer on the back and they can't get through and they can't back around. Uh, it's, it's not a good end to that road. We should consider whether it makes sense to continue that road as was anticipated when the subdivision was built, that that would connect going up through the canyon. We don't want it as a master planned road because we don't want to route a bunch of traffic through it and have neighborhoods tie into it. But it may make some sense to just tie it in as a, as, from a, from the subdivision that develops to the east of that road, could just connect so that people do have a way through there, but wouldn't generate a lot of traffic because there's not a lot of reason for people to go back and forth through there. So that's, that's one of the areas of concern that we've had the most discussion in the last couple of weeks is where to tie that in, that east development of Iron Horse, uh, that is the Sittler property that the Levitts are developing, how to connect that over further west. Where the, should be connected, how many connections we need, where those connections make sense coming through the county subdivisions or through other areas and, and whether, you know, it's, it's, uh, our coordination with Cedar City and trying to say, you know, how do we master plan for both of us as developments occur so that we're coordinating that together. Jonathan Stathis is here from the city, uh, and he sent me a couple of slides, and I'll pull those up in a minute, and we can take a look at those specific to that area as well. That's why we've got this up, though. Let's just continue to go through the rest of the Eight A as it drops down to the bottom and hits the Old Highway 91 frontage road.
So going back, the gray is the city limits, the white is the county. So these are where your jurisdiction resides, is within there. So we hooked on to 71 because that's where the city was coming out with a, um, a corridor that would carry traffic, and we took it on to the next, the green one there, which will take it to the west. We try to make these things so they're reasonably spaced every half mile or three quarters of mile so that the developments and the traffics actually have a route to get in and out. We, we increase that accessibility while we're still maintaining, uh, uh, the ability to move traffic. So that.
So the red, uh, sorry, Reed.
Oh, go ahead.
The red is 100-foot right away. So the master plan is calling for 100-foot right away on the, on the red roads, which is Westview Drive and Old Highway 91. The green's 75-foot right away, the yellow's 50, 50 or 55-foot right away.
Right. And we haven't, uh, done much with the 50s and 55s because.
The purple on there you'll see are 75, or 66-foot right aways.
Right.
And what we've tried to do, and I'll show in some of the other slides in just a second, uh, is that we've tried to, to, to grid the area so that not all the traffic is funneled into Westview Drive. The idea is that a lot of those neighborhoods can go over to 66, to 5,700, to, um, uh, 4,500, to all of the other roads that are out in that area that we'll show in just a minute, but can spread that, uh, the traffic out instead of funneling it all into Westview Drive.
I have a question.
As you look at the, pardon me.
I have a question. On that Middleton Road.
Yes.
That's, that's kind of a beeline through there. There's an awful lot of terrain.
Yeah, it doesn't necessarily have to be straight like that. It's just we're showing on the master plan, it's connecting point A and point B.
Correct. And, and as you can see, that, uh, north to south, both of those, John, came out of the city's master plan. We're just, they make sense to continue them into the county and, and down to 91. And as you can see, that south drive would, would allow some relief off of there to get to 91 without going by those two schools. There's an elementary and a high school proposed.
Middle school.
I'm sorry, middle school, both in this area.
Actually, a little bit further south and east for the, this, the middle school.
Too many lines sometimes. So we get to the next, and so we start looking at Westview Drive. This is what, something we, we wanted to coordinate with the neighbors particularly. And it's really important to them that, that this 100-foot right away, one of the things that, that, uh, we are doing a little different, we're not requiring that they give up an additional 15 feet of utility easement. Utilities are already there. One of the things we definitely don't want to move is a high-pressure gas line. But, so what that means is we are, each of the landowners along here have a 15-foot utility easement. What I've talked to several of the neighbors about is that, um, grant us an additional two feet. We want, we will keep the utility easement now in the county right away. So rather than the 15, we need 17 to complete the 100 feet on both sides. And what that will do, it'll, it'll also allow us to make the, the, uh, the ribbon of road, which has never been my intention to make it five lanes, but to allow it to be three lanes, so there's a turn lane in the middle, plus the, uh, active transportation plan, which would be nearer to their property lines, but standing off two feet, so that we're not on their property, but we would ask that they grant us, uh, an easement and a right away in properties that they currently, what's the best way to say this? It's their property, but it's restricted usage because it's a utility easement. And so we would take the utility easement, and, and they wouldn't have that in their property anymore. And I don't mean the word "take" in a, in a negative way, but we would become responsible for it. So here we are at 4B. Let's see, Area Eight A.
On the very left, yeah.
Yeah.
800 South's on the top.
So, so to get this to fit, you have to spin this counter, uh, counterclockwise. And so these are just the steps through where we see ourselves coming in and out of the city limits. Again, it's 100-foot right away, again, looking preferably like the picture. This is where it gets a little complicated through, uh, Spring Creek. We see that, uh, what, what this is showing is the green arrow shows a property corner, and what the yellow arrow, arrow shows is where we would want to be for our 100-foot of right away. There's already a 7.7 and a half PUE in there. So we're, in this area, it was very narrow. When they created Spring Creek, their utility easement was not 15 feet, as is now our standard. It was 7 and 1/2 feet. So through that short section, there is only a 15-foot PUE. So there are. 7 and 1/2 on each side, so we would be asking for 9 and 1/2 on additional. That, that is a, a bigger stake into this than everyone else. But again, it provides that continuity of, of transportation. We don't want to have things getting bigger and smaller as we go. So each one of these just show those, uh, smaller PUEs. Here, this is, this is more typical. This is at 12,000, 1200 South. So if you see, the property line again is still the green arrow. The PUE is 15 feet, which is that property that, that, uh, has limited usage to the owner, and we're asking for an additional two feet. And, and this is what we're proposing, that the commission. And, and this is what we're proposing, that the commission approves this master plan, then we can approach the owners about obtaining the additional footage. All these are just showing that, we spent a lot of time, or I did, out there measuring these things. So again, this is the fifteen foot PUE, fifteen foot PUE, two feet. This is what we envisioned the actual road looking like. This was just a sample of, just as you're coming on the frontage road on 91, there's a turn lane, that's the-
The Sinclair, Paiute Tribe Sinclair Station.
Thank you, yeah. And so, if we, if we have to do this and we want to be good neighbors with the community, we would probably push this where possible and where we have to, we'd make the pavement wider seven and a half feet on each side. That way, we're not encroaching a full lane into those properties, but we're using the seven and a half feet and still getting the third lane. Because what we want is twelve foot lanes minimum for each travel lane and each turn lane. This is a progressive thing, this isn't going to happen overnight. Where it needs to happen more sooner rather than later is between fifty-six and eight hundred south, because that's where we're getting a D rating right now. But it's going to have to progressively go down. Doesn't mean that it's a three lanes all the way, there will be places where it won't be necessary, but we can widen it, we can save the taxpayers money because we aren't going to do it all at once and we aren't going to do it where it's not necessary to have a third lane. We're not going to try to turn into the backside of Westview. All those fences make no sense to have a third lane there. But we will want them at the intersections so that people can get in and out safely. Now, there is some problems on, on the, not problems, but there will be issues if we don't do a third lane. We won't be turning into the back of Westview, but we will want to let the neighbors come out of their, out of their driveways who are to the east of there. And they find that, they don't always find that an inviting situation because Westview can get quite quick. We're not proposing that we increase the speed limit, that's not going along with this, speed limit's not going to move traffic faster. We already have it fa, it's already going fast enough, it's exceeding the speed limit often. But we're going to keep the speed limits the same, we just want to make it safer and allow for on and off traffic.
These are just some of the other areas showing the connections and the other master planned roads in that area. This, the one on the left is Westview Drive, or excuse me, SUU Farm. And of course, when we showed this, they were concerned that we were going to be building roads across the farm. Again, master plan as, if, if and ever that develops, then this is where we would want connections going through. And so, that's what we're, you know, trying to show here. The one on the right is the Quichapah Channel where, whoops, where the property, where currently it turns and comes south and where fifty-three hundred west would be where it turns and comes down. And we're just trying to accommodate additional width there on that corner.
I'd like to say, and this is a great example, for example, SUU Farm has no intentions of developing, but if we don't have a master plan, we don't have the ability to require them to reserve a corridor either. Even though this is, is not likely, not likely in the near future or at any time that SUU ever plans to do so. Without, without this, we cannot go in and have a developer reserve the corridor.
But if SUU ever sold that, it would trigger this master plan.
As development occurred.
As development happened. If they chose to do that, we want to be ready for it. That's what all, all this is about is, is planning. I, I don't want to pick on any city, but you know, I was driving in St. George a couple of weeks ago and I actually came home and said, I wonder if we're actually being far sighted enough? Because we are trying to be far sighted with all this, but sometimes I say, have we really even maybe some of these roads, have we thought about the whole holistic long-term view of what's everything going to look like? Not, not in the next fifty years, but in the next two hundred years. So, I find that cities are young, people are old. We often think about things in our own lifespan and reality is, where I lived for the last thirty years, those cities were three hundred years old and they had cow paths to start out with. And that created, if you've ever driven through Boston, and many of you might have, it's a joy to behold. Anyway, so we, we get back and we're going to look at, at this here. Can you go back to the other slide, Reed? Just the, this. This is unique and I wanted to point this out. Where you see the forty-five there, that's the end of eight hundred south, that is where fifty-one, fifty-three hundred south would come in.
West.
West, west, yes. Fifty-three hundred west, which is currently the Quichapah Channel. That purple line is in the middle of the Quichapah Channel. It takes right there, it takes a hard turn to the west. So after consideration, we had considered that to only be a seventy-five foot corridor, but I felt it was short sighted to do that and not consider that we may need more room to make that action happen. Because we're going to have to deal with a channel and three, three roads. And I felt that we needed to give ourselves a little extra space because Quichapah Channel is going to have to move if we're going to keep the road straight. Not very far, but when the developer comes, which is to the east and asks for development, we want to have a reserve there, not only for fifty-three hundred west, but also for the movement of the channel to the west, I mean to the east. But then how does it get under eight hundred and fifty-three? So, that little section is, I think it's three hundred feet of a hundred foot right away to give us room. We'll return that to the owners if it's not all needed, but I just point that out.
I'll also mention, just for information, that the dotted, dotted lines are roads that are not there currently. The solid lines, there are roads currently, the dotted lines are not currently there. Those would be what we would look for, given the different widths based on the colors. And so, I, I, let me just jump in here, Rich, quickly move us forward. We, fifty-seven hundred west, of course, is the belt route, this map shows fifty-three hundred. There are several places through there that, in that neighborhood, the old Thorley Ranch subdivision that connect onto fifty-seven hundred. As fifty-seven hundred gets busier and busier, we're going to have to eliminate some of those connections. And so, we want a master plan and say, this road will connect and go through in the future, this one won't, this one won't. They'll have to dead end because there'll just be too much traffic on fifty-seven hundred west to allow that many entry points in the, from the neighborhood. So those are things that we're looking at again, like Rich said, down the road so that we can address those in the future. Again, just out in the area, further away, some of the other connections that are seventy-five, sixty-six foot right aways, fifty-seven hundred is the belt route, the blue, or the red one running down through the middle. And these are just showing how the grid can connect all those so that allow people to move through, throughout that area.
And those distances are a half mile.
Again, just on the southern end, further west from Westview, how some of those would connect. So again, dotted lines you see off the west there, coming out of that Cordero project on the, in the city on the north, comes down through and connects onto Old Highway 91 there on the left, and just shows how those are all connecting in. So it, it creates a pretty good grid out there in that area and this follows the city's master plan and the county's master plan that we've had for years in the past as well and just trying to update it and, and update the widths so that they can accommodate the amount of traffic that we need.
I'd say the only place that we're not connecting with what the city proposed is up there on Scott Bird's-
On that jump over.
On the jump over road.
Trying to figure that out still.
And we're still trying to figure that out and whether that ought to stay in the city limits and, and whatnot. But I think that would be something that commissioners and others would like to discuss, so. Do we have anything else?
Yeah, I think that's enough of an introduction and take some input, then we can answer questions and then we can come back to that jump over area and let you know that we, we have had good discussion with the developers in that area and they've met together since we met and they've gone on site visits and proposed some of these other alignments. And they recognize that the way it was left is that they would kind of each have independent developments. But, but they also need, know that they, it would work better to tie together both transportation, but also working with utilities, getting water and sewer easements and drainage easements through each other's properties. And so, I think it's helped open some of that discussion and help facilitate that. They've, they've been communicating really effectively and I think it's helped and we'll make a better product in the end. Whether we tie them together with roads or not, just development wise, it will be a much better product.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and, before we open the public hearing, I just want to express gratitude to staff in Cedar City and the county for all their work and also to the citizens that have given a lot of input. We've talked about this, a lot of this for a long time, but I'll go ahead and, and are we ready then?
Yeah, I was just going to maybe have a map that people can point to and that's probably the best one of the area and they can, wouldn't have to be jumping around.
John, is it possible to get a pointer that works on a screen or not? I mean, does that one work?
Kind of.
In case somebody wants to-
Works better when it's on.
Just in case somebody wants to point with that instead of walk over. Does that show up or not?
Green is better than red, but-
Oh, it did on the wall, but it doesn't on the screen very good.
Doesn't show up, does it?
Look how good it does on the wall.
They make one, does or not?
I had a red one, it didn't work at all and the green one kind of works.
Yeah, it kind of shows, doesn't it? That one shows up a little bit. Okay.
Yeah.
We'll just, we'll just put some wax paper over the TV screen.
They can walk up there if they need to.
All right.
Intentionally.
We'll go ahead and open the public hearing on this matter. If you would like to comment, please state your name and, and come on up.
My name's Patrick Sawyer and I live right on Westview across from four B Ranch where they're building now. And I got in on the start of this just by public notice and when we went to city meetings, seemed like this was all driven by the city and I believe you were still on the board then and you could attest to how unhappy people were.
Right.
Okay, and then it kind of got ugly, went both ways and then we got directed more towards the county commission, planning commission. And we had a lot of unhappiness at first with them because of what happened with the city. And then once everybody's temperament calmed down and we actually started talking about what we were concerned with, they addressed our concerns and things started going a little smoother. And, you know, anytime you have to essentially give something up, it's a hard pill to swallow. When you move into an area and you have a vision of what, how you want to live and someone else comes to change it, it's a hard pill to swallow. And the hundred foot road, because of the traffic and everything, the way the city came to us with it, it wasn't acceptable to people. And we all, along the road realized you can't stop progress. And then with the discussion and the bike lanes and, and everything, people realized, okay, if this plan follows through the way the county envisions it, it would be more acceptable and a lot better for all of us as a community. Not just developers wanting to push this, what people envision as super highway going through there. A lot of these gentlemen came and actually physically showed us what their vision was and people have come to accept it as this plan shows. You know, my concern is that, yeah, okay, we go ahead and negotiate and sell the property that, that they want to purchase to do this and then have the whole plan changed. So, my request would be if, if you guys do adopt this and decide that, that you would have a plan that you would be willing to stick with, that we, that we all learned, learned to cope with or learned, agreed with and decided that it would be better for everybody that way. A real important sticking factor to everybody that I talk to, the neighbors, there are, I don't know, roughly eight neighbors or so that are directly affected, is an additional easement. You know, I live on the side that, that has a gas line and most people that are affected live on that side. And, you know, we see that as a saving grace not to have to cede additional property. So, in, in accepting this, if there's some way you could put some kind of a note or something in there that, yeah, okay, this is what we're doing with no additional property being requested for an easement. That would help, in my opinion, I speak for myself and I know some of the neighbors, that would make negotiations and everything go a lot smoother. Because we don't want to give it up, but we're willing to work with everybody to give what this plan says, but I don't think anybody wants anymore, so.
So you're opposed to the additional two feet?
No, no, I think everybody sees the two feet.
You're just worried about more than that.
More than that, you know, the, everybody became aware of the public utility easement that we do have because when they put a utility in there, one of the cable companies, they actually sent a surveyor out and put stakes out. And people didn't understand what it was and between him and myself, we discussed with the neighbors and tried to make them understand what, what those stakes meant. And then he came through and put feathers in and he himself and I kind of talked to some of the neighbors, explained to them, this, if this plan sticks, this will be where your new property line will be. And like I said, you know, people, they got a frown, but they're saying, yeah, okay, that's, in my opinion, they, they told me that that would be livable and it'd be acceptable. And the reason I'm here today is because I would like to express to you guys that hard pill to swallow, but people have come to the realization that we're not going to stop progress and we're willing to work with everybody to, to make that a, a great place for everybody. But that is where it stops and without starting the war again.
Okay.
What I have to say. I appreciate, truly, truly appreciate all their effort because some of the negotiation with the city is, they weren't very nice. They, they weren't treating people as people. And these gentlemen here, they, they took the time and explained and helped everybody understand what the vision really was. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
We're pretty proud of them too, I'll just say that.
Is that your name?
Richard Wilson County Engineer. So, I know one of the concerns, and this is something we, we've talked to the city about, is that we come up with an agreement that this is what it, it will look like, that there will be a three lane and bike paths. And what they've expressed to me is, and at our other meetings, is how do we get that kind of guarantee going in the future before, after we're all gone? Until it's really, really necessary, we want to, they, they want to know from the commissioners that, and I don't know if Sam can speak to whether there's a way to, to make that a binding agreement, at least over the time until we get to a point that, that it cannot sustain traffic. But that is forever beyond my time and probably yours. And so, but I know that this is, is key on their mind and that's what Patrick was talking about, is, is they're, they're happy with the way that it's working out, but they really want to make sure that this is, is what the, the county is planning to do. And we've talked with the city and, and how to interface with them to, because there are places where they have more dense development and curb and sidewalk will make sense, but it doesn't make sense all the way where there isn't the smaller lots. Sorry for that interjection.
One of the, one of the hard things.
Oh, yeah.
One of the hard things about things like this is that a current commission can't obligate a future commission and that's, but yeah.
We, we can adopt a standard and both the city and the county agree to, and we say, this is what it'll look like, this is the standard for that area. That's what we're trying to do, recognizing that nothing is forever. But we can also be responsible in our planning and show the commitment to making that because the real challenge is from Highway fifty-six, you know, it's in the city, down for a ways and then it's in the county, then it's in the city, then it's in the county, then it's in the city and then it's in the county. That many times.
Yeah.
By the time you get down to Old Highway ninety-one. And so, we don't want different standards, different types of roads each time. And so, we appreciated the city recognizing and working with us and trying to come up with something that will work.
Brad Bassett, I-
Brad Bassett, I'm concerned too, like they said, in the future, not because of us, you know, we'll be long on, I keep, you know, I understand that. But it's our children that my wife and I are concerned about their future because they're the ones that are going to inherit it and we want the best for our kids too. I'm in a unique situation because of my location, my property line was one of the pictures up there. I'm on 1950 South, which was mentioned, improving that, you know, going through, which would increase traffic on that side. And I'm on our Westview Drive, which is going to be widened and increase traffic. And I don't mind that. Yeah, yep. And so another unique situation is I'm a retired carpenter, I was in construction. And they keep saying, well, you widen the road, it's going to increase traffic. And I go, no, no, building homes increase traffic and you have to widen the roads because... And so I raised my family on construction and so, you know, I can't say, well, I have my house, I don't want anybody else to have theirs. And so I understand that too. The other thing that I have a unique situation is I'm a cyclist. And it's safer, I'm serious, it's safer to ride on the freeway than it is on Westview Drive. And so I'm for widening and improving because of my background. But my only concern, and it's been brought up, and we really do appreciate the county, is think it out. Do things wisely, and I've said that before, that, you know, obviously we don't have a crystal ball that we can see the future, but we can learn from past mistakes. And so that's only my, you know, just wisdom. And I understand that, you know, in another five years, there's going to be a different group of people and things will change, but hopefully they'll use wisdom too. But I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Bob Ballou. I do live in Cedar City, but I'm also a cyclist. And I attest to the comment that Westview is not the most comfortable place for this 83-year-old and his 77-year-old wife to bicycle. But we do it and we really do enjoy it. I want to commend the planners and you for looking to the future. It appears that they've given as much credibility to the taxpayers as to the developers. And that's critical. I mean, the folks that are currently paying the taxes need to have a voice and we're here in that vein. I like the concept, I mean, the idea of the active transportation, I had not used, heard that term before. I use human-powered recreation in my world of backpacking and all, but this is good. When you look at the growth of the electric bicycle business across the country and here locally in Utah in the future, and the governor's desire to have communities interconnected with a system of trails, paved trails similar to the interstate highway system that connects all the states, I think this is looking ahead and deserves some accolades on the part of the staff and yourselves. I am concerned about some of the other proposals. I know that this jump-over road thing has got to be a real tiger in the tank. But I hope that as much consideration can be given to the current residents as possible on that one. That's beautiful country out there and putting in strange, different kinds of housing and development doesn't make a whole lot of sense for anybody, perhaps maybe for the developer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Hi, my name is Paul Rolant, I live on Panorama Drive in Iron County. And thanks for, you know, hosting this today and listening. I think we've all talked about the fact that what, you know, Reed and others have done, you know, to try to pull people together has been a much better process than we were doing with the city. And so we're really glad that we came to something that's somewhat of a compromise. But I do think that, you know, the vision here, this also means that this is about people who live here, okay? All we talk about is how people are driving from here to there, okay? But I think that's something that we have an opportunity in this area to really make it different, okay? To really value, you know, that there's walkways, that we can get our kids to school. There's an elementary school and a high school in that same area. We know that all that area that's going to be filled up with houses, there's going to be lots of kids out there, okay? So we want them to be able to get out and walk, we want everybody to be out and get and walk, ride your bikes. And we do want to have that, so people can get around in their cars and drive here to there. Now, do we all know, are we going to be driving cars in 50 years, 30 years? We might not be. That's quite hard for all of us old timers to think about, but we might not be. So that'd be something else to think about, is let's keep it, you know, family-friendly as much as we can. And I will tell you that, you know, the jump-over road that we've talked about, I think that's the most serious thing we really need to discuss because every time we turn around, we're creating all these connections to places, do we want more, do we want more cars there? I don't think we do, I don't think we want. When you're in those subdivisions and you've bought a place, you've built a place, you love it because it's somewhat got some space, it's got some quiet, and to bring in traffic from somewhere else, we've got to really start thinking about it. And that's why I appreciate what these guys are trying to do, is let's have a master plan, let's have something that when you buy something, you can really count on it. And I realize that, you know, like you said, you can't encumber a future, you know, board, but you can, you know, make good decisions and try to make them. If you make good decisions, you won't have to worry about making those changes, so.
Well, and Reed's response to me was perfect because that's why you go through this process is to have that plan.
Right.
And I really like the name of Jump Over Road.
Yeah, right.
But I get what you're saying and the short, the challenge is, is for these guys, it's like, how do you come up with a plan?
Yeah.
I mean, I was looking at Spring Creek, and it was plotted in 1990, so that's, you know, it's like 30 years ago. And back then, I used to ride my bike on Westview Drive and it was a very different experience.
Right, right.
And, but it was also, it wasn't the big connector that it is now. I mean, things develop and grow, and so how do you look forward? And to echo everyone, I applaud what they've done because that's a challenge, including the, what's it called? The Jump Over Road.
Right, right. Well, again, that would just make, that would make a huge difference in a lot of people's lives. And so that's the part I'm trying to get to, is that let's think about the fact that you've got people that live there. And that's important as much as that is to get moving traffic, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
I would like to echo some of the comments that have been made.
Did you tell us your name?
Already, Harold Pease. And Mr. Wilson came out and took the time to explain some things and I agree with Pat Sawyer very well. One thing I would like to add is in future development, you'll take the pressure off Westview Drive by continuing to build north-south roads going west. The moment you make some 4,700, 5,300, a 75-foot road, then you will relax a lot of the tension that you presently have on Westview just by that decision alone. As long as you wait till the last minute to do that going west, you will always have heavy traffic on Westview. And we can't avoid that being one of them, of course, and we're not asking that we share more of the traffic than other north-south avenues, but share the traffic plan from the very beginning, hinged on the idea that as population went further west, that they would too also share the traffic. And there'll come a time actually when they may be busier than Westview, believe it or not, as we fill this valley. So keep that in mind. So the moment we start seeing some of that happening, north-south other options, we will feel much more relaxed than being ganged up on, by a future commission that isn't bound by this commission, looking at Westview again. Well, let's just make it wider. And that isn't the answer for us. And I do live on Westview Drive and I do have kids, not grandkids too, I've got two kids living with me and six under the age of 13. So these are all, and I have a playground next to Westview Drive and we're not afraid. We don't consider Westview dangerous yet, but if I were a cyclist and being on the road, I probably would. But thank you for listening. And that's all we ever ask from the very beginning. We know that we don't have all the answers, but we do have a group that seems, especially Mr. Wilson when he came on board, that was willing to listen. Thank you, Mr. Wilson.
Thanks, Harold.
Thank you.
Good thing you came up, I was going to ask you too, John.
I was going to let anyone else if they wanted to speak, but I have Jonathan Staff as a city engineer for Cedar City. And I appreciate this opportunity to come before the county commission this morning. And I also wanted to say how grateful I am for both Reed and Rich for including the city in these conversations, they've been great to work with, and I really appreciate their input and their willingness to discuss these issues. I did put together a little presentation, but I think pretty much everything's already been covered in terms of, when we talk about the level of service on Westview Drive, we all know that, obviously, that it's okay now, but in several years, that's going to change, obviously, as the area grows in that area. Just a couple of quick things. On this map, this is the current map that was in Avenue's report in the transportation master plan, and it does show, rather than the jump-over road, it does show the road tying in there at Cross Hollow Drive. Just to give a little bit of history, the city did have a master plan road shown in that same location as the jump-over road going straight north through what's called the Old Sorrel Ranch subdivision. The developer was opposed to that. It was, it came before the city council, the city council voted to eliminate that connection. So that jump-over road is no longer part of the Cedar City master plan. And currently, the developer has expressed that he's very much opposed to that connection being made through the Old Sorrel Ranch. As Cedar, as representing the city, we would just ask that that master plan be followed as it's currently laid out with that connection there at Cross Hollow Drive. That property to the north is currently, or, sorry, the property, or, I guess I'd call it Scott Bird's property, is currently in the process of being developed. There are some ways that a road could come through that property. You know, obviously, the county's contributing to that, the traffic in that area. Those are public roads, so we feel like that's an option that should be considered. In the past week, there have been some very good discussions. We feel like those discussions should continue between the three developers, Iron Horse, Scott Bird, and Mr. Arbrust. But as of right now, that's how the master plan sits. I don't know that adding that jump-over road on the master plan is going to do much at this point. You know, basically with the fact that the developer to the north, Mr. Arbrust, is so much against that, so, and that's within the city boundaries. So that would have to be something that the city council would have to change at that As far as Westview Drive, we're very grateful that that's come back as a hundred-foot right-of-way. We feel like that's the correct width that it needs to be based on Avenue's analysis. I would like to have, and I appreciate the discussion this morning, I would like to have more discussion about the actual cross-sections and Reed and Rich, I'd be happy to sit down and discuss that with you more. We've actually got sections where you have county on one side and city on the other side, and so it gets really, it gets really complicated. But I think if we could come together and come up with cross-sections for Westview Drive that we both agree on, I think that would go a long way to making sure that as both sides of Westview Drive develop and all the way up and down the corridor, that we're all on the same page there.
So, just a question, if I understand you, Rich, you said where there's turnoffs, you'll have the turning lanes, but in between where there's none, it'll narrow back to two lanes, but then three, or will it be three lanes all the way? Sorry, Jonathan, I'm just going to say that question.
That's all right, thanks, Jonathan. So it does become a little complicated because there at Westview, where Westview subdivision is to the west of Westview Drive, there are still driveways on the east side.
Yes.
And they have a hard time getting out, so they'll need the third lane. So it'll just have to be built as it goes. And what Jonathan and I have talked about, and we'd like to get that standard up, is for example, up by Ladybug Nursery. I mean, there's some businesses right there. It would be hard for me to see that between Ladybug Nursery or the Center Street as it currently stands, down to the S U U Farm, that there would be any housing in there. It's so close to that flood channel, the Quichapac flood channel, and our standoff there is. And so, but on the other side, Old Sorrel, they need curb and gutter because they're dense housing. So it's got to be a, from point A to point B, this is what it'll look like, one side will be more open, one side won't, but then there will be sections. But what would be great is if that bicycle and active transportation plan reasonably came into the sidewalk sections so that we can continue to have pedestrian traffic safely maneuvering.
Well, that was a question I've always had, even when I was on the city council, was some of those residents on the east side, their driveways are already steep. If we encroach a little more, how are they going to, how in the world are they going to do it? They're going to have to have some kind of a ass driveway or, I don't know. Anyway, I guess those are the things we have to do.
Well, and that's one of the reasons, you know, I talked before, there are those who, rightly so, have questioned whether we need a hundred feet. And the reality is, if we were working on a pool table, it'd be simpler. But because of the lay of the land, we need the room just to make the adoptions to those cuts and fills so that we aren't trespassing, that we are staying within our hundred-foot right-of-way. So what that would mean to get those driveways a little more reasonable is that would be a place you would add fill, raise the road a little bit, so you're coming up to them. And then other places, you'd make cuts. But without that room to maneuver, you're very limited to driveways coming in steeply. So. Yeah. Jonathan, oh, there's the map. This is the one you're talking about.
Yeah.
This versus this.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. So on the master plan currently, it does show it just coming in there at Cross Hollow Drive. Now, obviously, there's some topography issues there and other things that make that a difficult connection, but again, the jump-over road, we just, the city council's made their, you know, that was decided several, you know, quite a while ago, that that master plan road wouldn't go through. So, at least at the city's level.
Yeah, I was going to ask you, could you clarify this, this jump-over road, because...
I think Jonathan is referring to this one, right?
I think Jonathan is referring to this one right here. This this length right here as the jump over road. And we're referring to this as the jump over road.
Oh, okay.
So are we on the same page with city or not with this jump over road?
No.
Huh?
We're we're not convinced that this.
It's so steep.
Saying I don't agree. I'm saying there's, you know, it's important to have connections, but we're really concerned about the ability physically to be be able to make a transition out of this area onto Westview Drive because of the steepness of this road. And it and otherwise, you're going to have to have, you know, you can say, well, there's the ability on this property to make a loop and and come down through here and come back and and tie in there and and, you know, take a big chunk out of this property. And part of the reason that this this discussion has escalated over the last couple of weeks is because we now have a new application for Mr. Byrd's property in the development, and it doesn't have any provision for that. We don't have a master plan that can require, you know, a a taking of of or reserving, preserving a right of way anywhere through here. All we had in our old master plan was this connection right here. If we change that because the city said, okay, no, we don't need to go through there anymore, to topographically, this was the best way to go down through. But as Jonathan mentioned, the developer convinced the city council not to do that. So they took that off the plan and then essentially dumped it into here, which is just physically impossible to come down just this way. You would and and there's development on this lot and this lot isn't big enough to to come back around and and work the topography there that really works. So if the city, you know, maintains a master plan that just stops right here and asks the county to continue it, I'm not sure where the county can continue it physically. It's just not possible unless you, you know, Mr. Byrd suggested, you know, if you come back here far enough, the elevation in the bottom of this draw to here, you can do an eight percent grade. But then you've got to cut out the mountain. You'd have a 500-foot opening at the top with just a big canyon.
Who's gonna pay for that?
You know, and so, yeah, physically, I suppose it's possible. But practically, it's just not feasible based on the current condition. So if the county said, well, we're agreeing, make on our master plan, put a connection from here to here and just say, well, we'll see what happens in the future. It physically would have to be built at some point if there's a way to do it. But there may just never be a way to do it. And so I just don't think that the county should, at this point, given that we don't have a a master plan to call for this, require the development of Mr. Byrd's property to preserve a corridor for a loop around through there. We just don't have that in our master plan and have never anticipated that that's where the road would go.
So it just dead ends?
So I don't know. That's the question.
So my my reason for jumping up was just to clarify that little square we all see. That's the water tanks.
Oh.
And and if we were, and and so they're they're a a physical obstacle that's there that complicates this all for all of us, even to to, we can't interfere with that water tank.
Yeah.
So my recommendation would be to allow some time to continue those discussions and see what see what can be worked out in that area. But I applaud the the work that's being done, especially on Westview Drive. And and again, I'd like to have more conversations on that to get those cross-sections worked out. Because as has been said, you know, the north part of Westview Drive is gonna be, look a lot different than the south portion. The north portion, you're getting more into a commercial area. South is more rural. So we'd like to identify what those cross-sections are gonna be down through Westview and work together on that. So.
So if we vote on this the way you're proposing, Reed, this includes a master plan that would impact the Byrd's property? Is that what you're saying?
No.
No, the the planning commission recommendation.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Was to, I don't know if you can see that very well. The planning commission recommendation was this route right here, to go down through here and just say the city needs to, in their development plan, require that connection. Because they didn't feel like it was the the right thing to dump all of this road traffic into this neighborhood or require Mr. Byrd some other kind of alignment through his property. And so.
So it's just on the side of his property.
Recommendation was to come just straight down there. And if the city does never say we're gonna connect through there, then essentially it would dead end up here. Or loop back around. And there's there's an opportunity and the possibility that, you know, if you look, let me go back just a little bit without making this more complicated. Sorry about that. You know, this this kind of shows that whole area and I just, let me move move my cursor. It's a little easier to see. So this is the corner of the Byrd property. Here's where the water tank is, right here. And this property out here, as they looked at the different options, you know, this is further north, of course. But then this connection down through the neighborhood and maybe you just, everything on the on the city side, they feed out, you know, their to their master plan road that comes down through the middle, and we don't make the connection, you know. That's an that's an option as well because it's just not looking physically like there's really a good opportunity to make this connection down through here because the city, well, that just doesn't work. So here here is the Armbrust property right here. That's where that that the alignment, our master plan showed. And this is what this this planning commission recommended. But the city master plan doesn't do that because they've already told Mr. Armbrust, okay, we'll change it and we won't put it there. And they took this off their master plan and just turned it right there and went and hit Cross Hollow Drive right here. That's what the city did. And we don't like that because physically, it's just really impossible to build it on that line. But also to take more of this property to to try to come around through there when this property owner had never anticipated that and his development plan had never included that. And we don't have anything on our master plan to require that. So it seems it's a little wrong, I guess the only word I can think of, to do that, to the property owner at this at this juncture. Had that been previous and had other discussions, then that's a different matter. But he's he's been working on six months now, a development plan, and tried different things with neighbors and different options. And now he's back with another proposal and it's never included the the thought that that could occur. It has included the discussion that a master planned road could come down through here. And that's what the planning commission recommended. But it just doesn't look like that's feasible. There's no reason to do that when it hits a dead end right there and isn't gonna go through. And the city would have to to invoke a little more power and say, oh, we've changed our mind and we can see the benefit that that does really need to go through there. So if you believe that that's likely to happen, then that is a good alignment. If you don't think that that's likely to happen, then I would just say they just keep the development on that side and we not have that connection. Or if you feel like, yeah, there's some rationale to saying, well, we we can, we can just leave this on the on the master plan and just say there could be a connection there. And then at any point, more development occurs there, more planning could be given to it and seeing whether physically there's a way to make that connection. Because a master plan doesn't ensure that there will be a road there, especially if there's no development there. You know, it would require much more of the legislative bodies, both the city and the county, to force something to go through there after the fact. And and just having that line on there simply invites that discussion in the future.
So we're voting on a lot of things today. This is just one of them. And it's still, even if we vote on this today, it's still fluid, is what you're saying. It's, I mean, it's.
Yeah, the master plan can always be changed. And and the figuring out of the alignment will always be down the road.
Right.
And and you have options today. You can say we'll approve Area Eight, but Eight A specifically on that jump over, we're gonna leave that off and we can add that on anytime as we look at these other areas and give it more discussion. You know, you can you can do Adopt Eight A, which is Westview Drive, and Eight, which is all the west area, and just leave out that jump over road and say, we want to discuss that further and we're gonna leave it off for now, but we can put it on. Because we're gonna have a number of these, you know, public hearings for other sections of the road and we can continue to evaluate that. Or we can put it on now and say, let's see how that feels and let's wear it for a year and see if anything comes of it. And we can always take it off. You have those options. Sometimes it's hard to have too many choices, huh?
That's true. Can I can I speak to the to the to the jump over road, though? One of the things that the citizens down there that it was going to connect to were really concerned about was just that traffic. And I know that the county commission, I mean, the county planning, when they talked to them, they had they had made a commitment. And and I'm not speaking for them other than what I think I heard, which was they would eliminate that, having heard them. And that's straight over. I'm just letting you know. And I think that's correct, isn't it, Reed?
So can I clarify, eliminate the the drop off and then the straight west? Is that is that what the discussion was?
Right. That's what they were told. The planning commission said, no, we don't think this is a better road.
And so they they do not.
This is the better road.
So they do not reckon recommend the jump over.
And the jump over is part of Eight A? Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes.
They just don't recommend this. They they recommend this. In Eight A, they not, because it is coming out, there are a couple of properties here that. Those are kind of the sound that also.
Okay. I'm just thinking of how I'm gonna clarify this in the minutes.
He's blessed with making this motion.
I think it's my turn.
Really, from Westview East and Eight is Westview West.
Okay.
And so what I'm trying to say is the is the is the two two roads that got the most attention was this jump over road and Westview Drive. And you've heard from the several people who are here that that as we've talked about the cross-section and and formalizing that, that is more palatable to them as they've understood that that would be what our goal would be. As for the jump over road, that never was very palatable.
So Eight A is Westview East.
Yes.
And East of Westview.
Okay, that was the part I wanted to clarify. Westview East and including Westview.
Yes.
So we could vote on Eight A and Eight A and and table the discussion on the jump over, is what you.
Yes, you could withdraw it as approved.
Or we can have you and Jonathan Armbrust in public and see who wins.
I'll I'll take that on.
Well, it would only be fair.
Like to see that, actually.
And I took Jonathan on. Then we know what the outcome will be.
We'll schedule that for the next commission meeting.
So so that would be the exclusion from Eight A would be the jump over road and perhaps even the road going north and just and and leave those on for another time when we see what, because we we have had some really good discussions with the developers. And they may come to a an agreement through there from from the Levitt group to the Armbrust group.
Have we had the city, the county, and all these developers in room together talking about this?
On a Zoom meeting.
We did on a Zoom meeting. Well, Mr. Armbrust.
You think there's more.
Mr. Armbrust from the from the.
Out of town.
Old Sorrel wasn't able to join us. But I had a previous conversation with him. And then he had a meeting with Dane Levitt on the Iron Horse Development. They met separately. Dane met with Scott Byrd on site and in our meeting. City, county, and everybody was on a meeting except for Mr. Armbrust, which we had a meeting earlier. And and all that information was conveyed to him later as well. So there's been some good discussion. We have all been in in room room together except for Mr. Armbrust. And and we've had other conversations with him.
And and I'll speak to that, that one of the good things that came out, and Reed mentioned this before, is that water, sewer, and stormwater all all are pretty much agreed upon. It's just transportation. And so we may get to a point where where maybe the two two larger developers, which are both in the city limits, may come up to a resolution for how to get east to west through there. Center Street has already been approved, which is an east to west corridor from the arena over to Westview Drive.
That's been decided.
North.
That'll be good.
Where is that?
Right. Well, it's on this map, right on the top, right here. So this is the connection right here. This is Cross Hollow Road. And we've had a lot of confusion, of course. This is Cross Hollow Road and then we have Cross Hollow Drive down here in the subdivision. So Cross Hollow Road, this will be the connection, Center Street, around the back of the Diamond Z Arena and over to Westview Drive right here. That's on the master plan for the city. And that's already started. It's stubbed in right here. And and you can see where that road is starting to come off of here. It's stubbed in. So that's a connection that will occur. The optional other connection, I think, is a real viable possibility, is the is this one. You know, coming off from, actually, this shows it better, coming from their road down here below, around the the drainage, across and connecting into Hidden Hills. It's just that the city, again, took that off of their master plan requirement. And and it would just be a matter of when the developments occur that the city requires those connections to be made. That's another good connection that's further south. And I think if you had those two good connections and then below, it's harder to appreciate. But down through this area, there are also additional opportunities to connect South Mountain Road up through this development so that some of this area can come down and either go east or west on South Mountain Road. But again, it's a matter of a particular developer, a landowner, who says, yeah, I want to develop this, but I don't want that road coming through my property. And when they say that, so far, the city has said, okay, we won't make you put it through there. And that makes it hard for master planning, you know. And it's just how much lobbying that property owner can do to the legislative body to say, I don't, let's not put that road through. So far, that's kind of been what's kept those connections from going across here and may go, you know, from Hidden Hills up through here, which is a real good connection, and coming out of this subdivision out on the south and coming down to to South Mountain. Those are all out of our control because they're in the city.
Well, we're still in a in a public hearing, so I probably need to close. Is there any other that wanted to speak in the public hearing? Sorry, I kinda, thanks for the clarification.
Yep. My name is Ann Jakus and I live on South Cross Hollow Drive. So you can guess which one I'm concerned about. The connection, like they're talking about, the connecting on to Cross Hollow Drive, that was, I thought, off the table. And now I was quite surprised to find it back on. So I would like to definitely voice that I would hope that you wouldn't approve that. The Byrd development that's going in, that property is zoned agriculture. It's not residential. So what he's proposing to put in is short-term rentals, probably generating quite a bit of property or quite a bit of traffic. I can see that, just, you know, decreasing our property value and making things a lot noisier, busier, not to mention that that road, like they said, is very steep and not super accessible. The other point I wanted to make was 1950 South that you guys had talked about, maybe connecting. And the Levitt group had said they were looking at possibly making that hiking trails because they're currently being used as hiking trails now and possibly being able to connect and do that. They didn't want to make that a road. So I would just like to voice my opinion that maybe that would be a better use of that property versus just everybody dumping into Cross Hollow Hills because we have a very thoughtful community. It's quiet. We bought there because it's rural. And now it seems like the developers, just because they don't want to put a road through their properties, they're just planning on just dumping it all through ours, even though it's not the most straightforward route to get to Westview. They'd be weaving around residential areas. It just doesn't seem like a very good.
I think that has been on the master plan, though, hasn't it? That one coming into there?
This connection right here you're talking about.
Yeah.
When this subdivision was built, it was terminated because that was the edge of their property. It was just terminated there with the expectation that, you know, something would connect on through. They weren't to develop. They weren't the developer of the property to the east and therefore couldn't do that. So they just made provisions that that would be another way out of the subdivision.
Mm-hmm.
Usually when we subdivide, sorry, when we subdivide, of course, and depending on how many units are in the subdivision, it requires more than one entry and exit.
An exit, right.
And so that was just a future exit point that accommodated the requirements of the subdivision, that you can't have that many units in there without, with only one entry point. So they could only provide to the possibility of the end of their property with that expectation or anticipation in the future that would allow exit out of the property, out of the subdivision.
I see.
Didn't your other plan have a better road that connected down to the other, didn't you have another road that would potentially connect versus going through 1950 South?
There's nothing on the master plan right now.
Okay.
For the city or the county.
Okay. My main, I, I know I probably can't do much about that. They just said that they thought they might do hiking trails or whatever to connect so that the people in Cross Hollow Hills, instead of having just a complete negative from all those homes and traffic flooding into our neighborhood, it would be a way that Cross Hollow Hills could potentially connect to some of their parks that they had thoughtfully planned into their communities up there. But my, my biggest concern is the Cross Hollow Drive connection. So, I mean, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, so just for clarification, I think it's, is what you're looking for, Commissioner. My recommendation is that we leave both of those roads off of this decision today. Both the one that goes north and the one that goes west, the, until we have worked out something and we can come back.
Right.
With that question.
So you're, you're saying 8 and 8A, but leave those off?
Yeah, yeah. Approve both 8 and 8A and leave those off. There's nothing...
Including Westview, but excluding the jump over and the South Mountain connection? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Both of...
Not, not, the South Mountain is not in our jurisdiction.
That's our master plan. That's out, that's in the city.
Okay.
That's outside of our jurisdiction.
So I just, I'm just for, I'm, I'm just trying to clarify for the minute. So the jump over road and?
And the, the option going north instead of the jump over.
Jump over road north. Yeah.
Two jump over roads.
Right. Jump over road. And, and I think we can have a further discussion and, and that would, that would...
I think that'd be, I'd feel more comfortable with that voting. This is complicated.
Yes.
Hi, Patrick Sawyer again. Um, you know, sitting here listening to this, it brings up, uh, concern again about, you know, you have a planning commission, right, that, that built this plan that everybody's buying into, that everybody thinks is a good thing. And you get the city and developers to come through and just squash everything. Why, they, they suggested a road to go through a community that wasn't built yet and a developer said no. So the city buckled and said, no, we're not going to do that and threw it back at you guys. When are you guys going to start taking a stand for the people that already lived there? That already paid taxes, that already do this and say, hey, no, we, we, we need to go with who we're paying for to build the plan that, that I'm sure you guys trust these people to build something that you guys agree with. And then you get someone else, a developer, that just squashes it. Developer, why do they not want it? Because they don't want to give up revenue or to sell a piece of property? Well, I live on Westview. I don't want to give this, but yet we're giving consideration and squashing everything that these, these people talk about to tell you it's a good reason and tell you why it's a good reason to people that just say, no, I don't want to do it. And I, I have a real hard time swallowing that. You want me to give up property, but yet the city or whoever wants to just go ahead and let these people run amok and make their profit, do what they want and make it your problem. I think it's time that you guys should take the consideration of people that already live there and what your team built for you and vote that way, not what a developer or somebody else wants to tell you how to vote. Thank you.
It's, it's difficult and it's, it's hard because we have to work together with the city and the county and we do it all the time. And, but it's, but it's difficult sometimes. And when a city council votes against a, something, do we jump on top and say, well, we're not going to accept that? We can't, you know, that's very difficult. That's very difficult. So you know what our dilemma is? That, that road is, we have talked about it ever since I've been on, on the commission and it's, it's, it's a hard, I mean, it's not really feasible, you know, with the steepness of that. Um, but, but hopefully somebody will, you know, come up with a better solution. Come on up.
State your name, please.
Craig Jakus. I live in that area. I, I know it's hard for the, for the county, but the county needs to say to the city, no, it's not our issue anymore. It's also their issue. How come they can shut it down? Why do we have to even consider it? If we shut it down, then it's their issue again. Like they mentioned, we're taxpayers now. Lawyers and lobbyists seem to have a handle on the city's council, not in a bad way, but influence-wise. And we can vote all day long, but it seems like, oh, here, get the lobbyists back in here and they do something behind closed doors, sort of, and throw it right back at us. We just need to say no. You know, we're not going to do this jump over road. You guys need to talk to this undeveloped land with homes that aren't even built yet. And when people do build there, they'll know there's a road there. Whereas we're already here. So we should have priority as far as, well, I know we do with the county, but it's not just the county's issue. The county should just tell the city, no, we're not doing it. We have the power too. So, just saying. Thanks.
Well, we'll, uh, seeing no more people once come up, I'll close this public hearing, declare it closed and, and, uh, leave, go to the...
Is there any more clarification?
Unless you have questions.
Sitting through this, I gotta say something. I'm Joe Portalese. I live in Red Canyon Estates and I really don't have any stake in this other than just seeing this happen in the community I used to live in. I used to live in a community very similar to, to, you know, Cedar Valley. And I can assure you, it seems like the burden is going to fall on these people unfortunately, now, now that they're already there. But you need to look at this as a long-term because that whole map is going to be covered in homes in 20 years. So take that into consideration because it's gonna happen. That's all I gotta say on that one.
That's what makes it difficult. Absolutely. Because you have to have a crystal ball and it, it, it's hard as commissioners to make these decisions because they're long-term. And, and that does make it really difficult. Um, that's why it's, you know, you shut a road down and, you know, maybe it can go a different way. I mean, it, it is. It's a, I don't know how...
Come on up to the mic.
I don't see it feasible because of the steepness of that road, but...
You, you ma'am were saying shut a road down and it's that, whose road is it? Is it the people that live theirs road? People that have to deal with it? Or is it a developer road that makes it good for a developer? So if you're going to shut roads down, shut down one that, that, that they don't agree with, that they want to dump off somewhere. Shut that other road down. Make it not connect. Make it not go, if they, if they don't want to go through theirs, why does it have to go through our community? They're the ones that aren't built yet. They're the ones that are, are profiting from this development. Let them absorb some of this. Not just give it back to the county. Not give it to these people, to me, to my neighbors and to the other people. You know, if, if people with trailers, people whatever, if that's a fast route for them and they're going to go there, it's going to be another mess. Not for these small homes, not for everything. They're going to be a mess for everybody that's lived there and have to pick up the pieces and try to learn how to be, you know, deal with the noise, deal with the traffic, deal with people blocking their driveways. You know, people talk about getting on Westview. That's my great fear. I live right on Westview. And there's times when, I live in, in like a lull where you get these big trucks to slow down for a, a bump and then accelerate hard and they don't care what's in front of them. What's in front of them is me. So why not break it off? You know, the city's going to do what the city do, but you guys could stop and just say, okay, you know what? We can't come to agreement for, you want this road just to dump off into a, a neighborhood, but you're not willing to concede and give some kind of a road through your neighborhood? Then don't build the other road. Don't do it. Just, you know what? Part of the master plan, you keep saying the master plan, the master plan showed that road going through. These gentlemen came up with a, a plan to make it better for everybody before anything was there. And all of a sudden, the developer, nope, we don't want that. So it's not good enough for you guys. It's not good enough for whoever votes on it. We're going to go back to what the developer wants and that is not right. Not right, no way, no how. Because we didn't buy that road when we bought our piece of property. And the growth has to be shared, not given to somebody.
Thank you. Okay, we'll close the public hearing for the second time.
(laughing)
And go to the commission.
So can I, I just have another question from staff. On, on the, on the jump over road issue, are we confident that there are, that, you said that we need some more consideration or, or some more discussion. Uh, are we confident that there, there's going to be something fruitful come out of that discussion?
So Commissioner, what I'm, what I'm suggesting is that, um, there will be more discussion with the developers, um, both the Levitt group and, and...
Armbrust.
And, and with the city. And I think that in the long run, there will be a solution, but it'll, it, it, for right now, I'm recommending that it not include the county portion. Because I think they, they own a large share of property through there and they can work things out that will probably be a better solution in the long run. Some of the ones that, that Reed showed earlier where...
They would be coming in from down here and this road is already here and so the drop over would be slight.
Into Hidden Hills.
Into Hidden Hills. Rather than down here where, where it's been reviewed so far, none of this area affects the county. The only thing that will affect the county is...
And where we have any jurisdiction is the jump over road and where the commission recommended, but we already have been told that it's going to be a dead end and not go anywhere. So when I say this may take further discussion, if at some future time, there is a, a different, you know, compromise made between developers, we could address it at that time. But right now, I don't see us creating a, a situation where we have a, a unlikely road or a, or, or a road that just won't work and one that's going to be dead-ended and not accepted to continue. So when I said delay the decision, let's see what the, the, the two larger developers come to a conclusion about. And it may not be something we need to readdress anyway.
Okay. No, thank you for that.
Well, I'll entertain a motion if you're ready.
All right. Um, all right, let's see. I'm going to move, move for approval of proposed amendments to the Iron County Transportation Plan, Study Areas 8 and 8A, Westview Drive and adjacent area, uh, excluding, uh, what's been record, what's been referred to as the jump over road, uh, just because of the, of what, uh, Mr. Wilson just described as far as further discussions. And we don't even know if that road, if we were to approve that, that it would even be there anyway. It's something down, something that...
It's really not feasible. So at this point...
It sounds like, it sounds like both of those options really aren't feasible. That there needs to be some other kind of a...
I, I would second that.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Paul Schinkers, thank you. Thanks to everybody for being here and your comments and hard work. And thanks for coming, Jonathan. Um, we'll go to public appointments, uh, number three, public comments. For those that wish to make a public comment not associated with an agenda item, a three-minute maximum and please state your name.
Hello.
Hi.
My name is Bill Stewart. I live adjacent to Heritage Park. So this really isn't a county problem.
Stand up up to the mic a little closer, sir.
This really isn't a county problem at this point, but I understand the gentleman that just built the motorcycle track next to Heritage Park has built others in the county. So I think what information I have will benefit you in your decisions for other places. Um, it's not yesterday, but the Sunday before that, JP's Landscaping, big truck showed up with a bulldozer, a front-end loader and a little bobcat at seven o'clock in the morning. They proceeded to clear off the lot that this gentleman owns and they built a BMX motorcycle racing track with all the whoop-de-dos and the jumps and the whole...
Sir, where is this located?
Right next on the lot, next in front, between Heritage Park.
Where's that at?
In...
Parowan, is it in Parowan City Limits?
Parowan City Limits.
I'm not sure we have jurisdiction over that. So, Sam, would we? If it's, if this issue is in the Parowan City Limits, we wouldn't, wouldn't, would it pertain to us or?
It should not. No, if it's a zoning or other violation inside of the city limits, your Parowan City, uh, Planning Commission or City Council should be able to address that.
It's not that we're not, you know, apathetic to your concerns. It's just that...
No, I understand you wouldn't have jurisdiction. I, I think what he is doing is, he's also done it in another place that is in the county. So I thought you might like some information, but if not, why I turn my time over to somebody else.
So I did, um, visit with the mayor, um, in between the breaks and that's why I was late getting back, Commissioner. But, uh, yeah, I guess she's spoken with at least one or two people about this. Um, and I, I just wanted to, she pulled in the city manager while they were there and, um, there really wasn't any construction that happened. There wasn't anything that they could regulate, is what she told me. But again, this isn't our jurisdiction. Um, and, and I, I needed to clarify because I told you guys that they meet at 5:30 on Thursdays. They meet at 6:00 PM on Thursdays in the city offices.
6:00 PM.
Yeah. And, and that's probably the better venue just because we, we, Iron County don't have any jurisdiction over...
Okay.
Over what happens in the city.
Very good then. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you for letting me talk today. My name is Kim Langston and I'm a resident in Red Canyon Estates. This has to do with the property that we have spoke with you last meeting. And, um, I know you have no answers at the moment. It's very frustrating, however. He is continuing to doing business and building on his dirt bike plan. Um, I found him on Facebook. He's bragging about making a dirt bike park. He's still pouring concrete, doing plumbing, and there's no city inspections that we're seeing. Nobody's coming down to stop him. He's making, um, he became violent. He run, he tried to run his truck into my husband's side by side because we're checking on our property. It's, we're just, it's getting very frustrating. I've also contacted the contractors board and licensing. They have no list of any violations that's been reported. And this is concerning to me about why he's getting away with getting, doing everything first and then getting permits after the fact. And it, it's, it makes it very sad for the homeowners here because we were here, we're taxpayers. He has the right to build a home. It is residential and I wish he would. It's just that there needs to be some kind of regulations on these dirt bike tracks. It's going to be ruining our quiet life. And get it out of the residential areas. I don't know why it has to be so, um, put into our residence. Um, not only that, I'm here to request a, uh, hearing to vacate the road between our Lot 14 and Lot 12. So it blocks off the traffic. He's bringing in the public. They're parking on the roads. It's just not stopped. It's so frustrating.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, do you have any questions? And do you have any questions for me at this time?
So when it comes to vacating a road or an easement, Utah law is fairly consistent. Um, there's, there is a process. We can certainly go through that. I will tell you that part of the process is um, it's a decision by the, by the legislative body whether or not. It, it has to be determined that there won't be any limited access. And I know this is gonna sound like fingernails on a chalkboard to you, but that access was granted when the subdivision was plotted. I mean, I've looked it up again and uh, and I'll show you.
He is actually using the other road at the moment. However, when it suits them to come in, they actually will go ahead and use our road, but they are using the other access. So I don't see why there's not a reason that we can't vacate that part of the road where it separates the trouble that's brewing.
And I'm certainly help you, happy to help you through that process. The, the challenge is, and this is one of the first places that Rich Wilson went to when the question came up was this owner's dedication. So this, this is a plat that was prepared in nineteen ninety-eight for your subdivision, right? And it says, cause I'll be honest, I thought maybe this was a silver bullet last time you guys were here. And then I, I realized how it was written. It says, uh, we, the owners of the property do hereby certify that it is our intention to subdivide the property um, so described in to lots, streets and easements as shown on this plat of Red Canyon Estates and to hereby dedicate the perpetual use of all public streets and easements as shown on this plat. Um, and sometimes the easements aren't dedicated in that way. But that is very, it's expressly like for the public enjoyment, which, which is gonna make it a difficult challenge to vacate that easement where it's being used. And, and that there is property being accessed through it. And that, I mean, I'm not a lawyer. I don't play one on TV. All I'm saying is, is when it comes time for the commissioners to have to deliberate that, it's gonna be a challenge because it is being used. All of the other questions that you have, aren't the questions that they get to ask when, when vacating an easement. And so that's, that's a tough one.
It is very tough because it's, nobody's stopping the traffic. We have to maintain insurance on our properties. He is not. This is something that if somebody is hurt there because of the situation going on, we could be liable and sued if it happens on our property because he's bringing in the public.
Well, and.
There's gotta be an accountability.
Well, it's a public road and, and the public sheriffs here, I mean, the public law enforcement would, would, I would imagine control something that happened.
We've already talked to with the sheriff. It was Bo Johnson. He said, they have all rights to come through the property. They can even come in thirty feet onto my property and I can't do a thing about it. It's wrong. And we are taxpayers. We are here now. And I understand that this is a residential area. And he's doing commercial properties. It's, it's for him to continue on, it just makes it very difficult to understand why.
So I do feel like I need to correct one part of that. And that is the public right of way areas are expressly defined on the plat. That does not give him right to encroach on, on, on your property. It's, it's confined to the right of way easement. I'm pointing on my screen as if you can see.
There's sixty-six foot road.
It's a sixty-six foot road and a sixty-six foot right of way easement. And I don't know, I don't know what the logic was, but that was the way it was plotted. Um, and it, and it kinda maybe ties into what they thought they would do in the future. But that's neither here nor there because the plat says that it's a dedicated roadway and a dedicated to the public easement expressly. So that's a challenge. But that doesn't mean that somebody gets to come onto your property. Like that's, it's like, I mean, I live, I live on one of the old streets in Cedar City, right? That doesn't mean somebody gets to drive their four wheeler on my lawn because I'm, I happen to be adjacent to a, a public road. They have public access. They don't have the right to encroach. And that's a distinction I just wanted to clarify.
I, I do understand what you're saying and everything. And that's why I was very concerned about the information I was given and everything. So I, I mean, he's, I even hate to say this. He stole water off of me. I had to put locks on my faucets because I went from eight thousand gallons to over thirty thousand gallons in a month. Cause he was filling his water up from my water source. This is, I mean, he is taking, when you give him an inch, he takes the mile.
He wasn't, he wasn't told that he could use that. He didn't have permission.
He didn't even walk up and say, hey, do you mind if I do this? You know, it's one thing to ask. But to take that much, I have to pay for this. It's putting all of the residents at responsible and he gets away with murder.
I understand. So it's hard when you have somebody new come in.
Well, it's not that the fact that we have something problem with new. It's, it's nice to have somebody build a home there, but to build a construction company and then a dirt bike truck? When it's residential, that's where the wrongness is. We would welcome to have neighbors. That's no problem. But he's not doing that. He's pouring concrete for a little tiny shack that looks like it's a concession stand. He's been doing it all over the county. That's where, and it's, he, he's getting away with it.
Hello.
Hi.
I'm Joe Portalese, Red Canyon Estates. I, I just, Jonathan was just talking about the easements. Hey Jonathan, I got a question for you.
I'm telling you that that's what's on the plat right there. So that you've got. So again, this was the way that the engineer did it in ninety-eight. So they, they clarified over, I'm gonna jump, I'm just gonna pan over here. And um, it, it says that they um, subdivide the property and to describe street, lot, streets and easements as shown on the plat and to hereby dedicate the perpetual use of all public streets and easements as shown on this plat. Now, whether or not that is different for this right of way easement, but, and the well location and windmill easement, generally those well protection areas are, are different, but I'm not an attorney. So.
Okay, on this lot, uh, fourteen, it actually says that it spells out that easement.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, for us. Now I looked at the state, what the state says about petitioning to, to remove it.
Mm-hmm.
If we can get this removed, this right of way easement, okay, if this not preclude us from getting to our well. I already checked with the state and the state says that if we do that, if, if he'll, you know.
You can always grant a, an exclusive easement later.
Well, it, 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 at the last page of this thing, it actually tells us that utilities and, you know, there would still be easement there for the utility companies and for everything else and our water. It's protected by the state. So if, if we can get twelve and fourteen done, what we would do is just go ahead and fence that off. And like I said last time, you know, you could put a fence, he already has a fence up that no one's allowed to go through but him right now. But if we did it there, if they would grant that to us, they, he's, they still have easement through Old Highway ninety-one. And we would still have um, control of the well. So it, it could work out feasibly. It can work out if they want it to work.
So that process, you wanna start with my, with my office and the clerk's office?
Oh, it does?
And we can, yeah, we can start that process.
Okay.
Um, and there's a whole noticing requirement. I'm just telling you, just, just like I told Mrs. Langston, that it's going to be a tough, a tough decision for the commissioners because the road is being used and it was dedicated to the public.
Okay, it's being, it is being used by him. And I can get Gary and Chris to sign, to sign on any affidavit you want that they don't need that. And that's sixty acres of it.
Yeah.
Right there.
I understand.
And there's only seven there. So I mean.
I'm just saying.
You tell me what to do and we.
We'll go through the process. I'm just saying it's gonna be a tough.
Okay.
Road to hoe.
Gonna have to try something, right?
Yep.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Oh, I forgot. Hang on.
But wait, there's more.
Yeah, we got served. They sent us a paper. He sent us a paper that we trespassed and a cease and desist.
Several of us neighbors in the neighborhood.
And I, we never trespassed. I'm seventy years old. I'm not climbing no fences. This is, like I told you last time, this is escalating and it's like, I don't want it to escalate. I don't want, I don't want these problems. So.
And I'm Michelle Portalese. That's why I'm up here. I'm just, I'm worried for my safety as well as my neighbors. The man has stopped me on ninety-one the other day and took my picture. He's trying to aggravate me. He has sent me a cease and desist. And what's the other name of that thing he sent me? I've never been on his property. Met the man once when he stopped me on the county road to yell profanities at me. This is a safety issue and I hate to see this become where someone gets hurt. He's running people off the road. He has obscenities at us. I understand this is not gonna be an easy sell. But I would like to explain, that road was never open until he moved here. So why all of a sudden does he get the priority to open it and use it when he has access somewhere else? And I understand it's a hard sell, but please consider where we're coming from on this. This is a safety issue. And someone's gonna be held liable, I'm afraid. And the county has never maintained that portion of the road, never. Like I said, the last time I was here was a trail to move the sheep. That's all it's ever been. And I know many place roads, trails that have been vacated, one of them in Allard, that was vacated, that was a bridle trail and they vacated it. So I don't know that that's a legitimate argument. But anyway, thank you for your service. And thank you Jonathan for helping walking us through the process.
Thank you.
Hello folks. I'm Becky Helquist. I live three doors down from the Heritage Park here in, in Parowan.
Becky, what was your last name?
Helquist. He came in on Sunday and, and put this track in. And, and we're all wandering. Uh, Bill went up and talked to the guy who was doing it. He said that they were going to do e-bikes and pit bikes. So I just looked up uh, the decibel levels of a, of a pit bike. It's ninety-six decibels equal to a chainsaw.
So there again, is this, this is in Parowan City, right?
This is in Parowan City. And we're right, no, no, we're right in the middle of, of a bowl of, of homeowners. I.
It's in Parowan City. So this, you need to take your discussion to.
Yes.
Parowan.
Well, I would, I wanna be on the record. Uh, I also was, was photographed when I'm over there looking. This is an issue that needs to be addressed. And I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I, I guess can I just ask a general question? We're talking about the same property owner, same developer in both, both Parowan City and, okay. Thank you.
Just to be clear, when I talked to the mayor and the city manager, they weren't, they hadn't verified that yet.
Okay.
Yeah, they're.
To the best of your knowledge.
I don't know if it's verified, but so to clarify, I'm Joe Portalese again. Sorry, um, Red Canyon. So to clarify what they said is, I don't, we're not a hundred percent sure of the relation of the two. But in looking at this, there was people down looking at this new motocross track and our neighbor, the one who's causing us problems, came by, stopped on the highway, physically took photographs and kept going. So there's probably some.
Connection somehow.
All right. I don't know where I'm gonna start at cause we're all over the place now. Okay, so I moved here uh, almost five years ago from, as I mentioned before, a community that growing up, used to be what this is now. And I moved, we gave up everything to get away from that. To basically live a rural lifestyle and have a nice quality of life. We took everything we had, walked away from two killer careers. Every dollar we had and we bought out here at Red Canyon Estates. So we could basically live our dream of, you know, the, that's the biggest ranch that we could afford. And you know, to pursue that life. So obviously you guys know what's going on out there now, which is, it's made it pretty miserable. And I'm gonna be more general because I see a lot of things that I've been noticing over the last two years. And I figured today would give me the opportunity to speak to it about things that are going on all over the county. And I'm wondering, do you, is, is there a cohesive vision for this county? And what do you guys want this county to be? Because I notice now, we have a lot of lots, like especially out in the valley, red, or out by Three Peaks where none of the ordinancees are being enforced. You have people living in trailers all over the place. There's, I mean, I'm sure you guys have been out there. It's terrible out there. And I know the crime's growing out there and everything else. And I know you guys, I know the county's short staffed as well. So I know there's difficulty in enforcement, but I just, I hate to see the county uh, declining and turning into the place that I fled, you know? I get, I could go on and on with comparisons to things, but basically, I think all that we are asking for in our community is for you guys, for the county to enforce the laws that are already in place. We all abide by those rules, you know, and we're expected to, and we don't have a problem with it. But our neighbor obviously doesn't abide by those rules and doesn't care. And to speak to like what Kim was saying about, you know, he can't do this, he can do that, he can't do that. He can't come on, can't come on your property, can't come off the easement. Uh, yes, he can. He does it all the time. Who's gonna stop him?
He's trespassing if that's what he does.
Yes, I realize that, but who's gonna stop him? We've called the sheriff. We've talked to the county. We are trying to get somebody to help us to remedy this situation. And everybody just passes the buck. What are we gonna, what do we have to do? I mean, so there's been threats of lawsuits now. Um, and there has been altercations, none physical yet. The guy, I mean, and I don't, I don't even know the guy. I haven't talked to him because I'm afraid to talk to him. Not because I'm afraid of him, because I'm afraid of what will happen. I have young kids that I, I need to be around to raise. Okay, this guy's for, I mean, we're being forced into a hard spot. Yeah, I mean, obviously we're desperate. And I think, I know nobody wants to talk about the vacating of this road. But I have lost so much sleep over this and went, and mulled over this um, for hours. And to me, vacating this road, even if we have to leave a utility easement or something, is gonna be the easiest way to deal with this. Because they already have a, a good road that's no longer than the drive I take to my house. Okay?
Like our, sorry to interrupt, but like our clerk said, there's a process for this.
Yeah, I understand that, but.
This is public comment. We have a, we have.
Yeah, yeah, I know you can't do that today. Yeah, yeah.
And we need to.
Okay, I know you can't do that today, but I'm just gonna, I'm just putting that out there because what are we gonna do? Are we gonna wait till somebody's arrested for a felony? Till there's a, till there's a wreck on the road? I mean, and the, the other thing is, is, I mean, we, we're not getting any feedback. Okay? Like I said, it's just frustrating that he's allowed to do whatever he wants. Has he been issued fines? I don't know. I doubt it. Is, is anybody over there looking at what's going on now? I don't think so. Do I have a right to? I mean, do I, do, am I being, am I gonna be forced to live to, live next to a motocross track? I mean, would, would you guys wanna live next to that? Nobody wants to live next to that. Is there no ordinance against that? That's an R-five property. There's not a residence on it. There's no water. There's no, there's not a dwelling one. The only things on that property are motorcycle track and, and a building used to store construction materials. It just feels like he's being catered to and we're being kicked to the curb. So I thank you guys for anything you have done and are doing. Okay, I know it's hard. I know it's a hard situation. It's hard for us. But just if you, if anybody could give us insight to what's going on.
So we have.
Keep us in the loop and.
We, we, we had the, you know, on the agenda before the last meeting, you guys. And, and I appreciate you coming. Uh, we've got our plant, our, our building is, is official and our, and our code enforcement officer, they're working on this. And we gotta give them time to work through this.
I understand.
And our green belt.
Yeah, we understand. I mean, we understand the wheels of government take time.
They do.
But we haven't heard anything and our situation is getting, is getting worse. And the, the problem is, is what power do we have, you know? I mean, I, so I was going to go check the well the other day, but I noticed he was down there. And as soon as he saw me, he backed up and blocked the gate. Okay, so now I can't even go, I can't even go on Lot fourteen to go check the well because he's down there guarding. My property. So I'm going to be forced to have a confrontation with him. You know, and as far, as far as the road being this right of way. He's, it has a locked gate on it. So that kind of negates the argument that that is a public right of way and has to be allowed to pass. He's the only person with the key.
We are working on that.
I know. I'm just speaking my mind.
I know. I get it. I, I, yeah. We, we totally get it.
Blaming any of you, I just, I'm begging you for help.
Yeah, I, I get it.
It's something is, I mean, it's not getting better, obviously. So like I said, again, thank you for anything you are doing and are going to do in the future.
And I want to manage expectations. The process to vacate an easement or road. Takes months. It's not a slow process.
Okay.
Just, just so you know, that's what we're in for. And I, I will help you through it.
Okay.
It takes time.
What's the process to enforce the building codes?
I'm not the building guy. I don't.
That's not hard.
Terry's not here, but they are working on it. I know that they're, they've had meetings on it.
Enforcement Officer Joe, he said that they're in the thirty-day process. They send out a seven-day letter and a thirty-day letter. If they don't get a response, then they can. Move forward with, uh, nuisance abatement, so.
Yeah, that's.
We are working on it. So you got to give us time, sir.
Okay, yeah, we are. Just.
Thank you.
I know. Thank you.
Craig Wolfman, I live at, uh, at the Red Canyon Estates. I apologize. I'll try to take as little time as I can and I'll try to be nice. I don't understand, with all the things I've talked, this, this other group that's talked earlier and all the things they had and the problems they feel like they have. I don't understand how one person can be allowed to take away privileges, rights, way of life, uh, safety. For an entire community, just to have what he wants to make even more money than he apparently already has. Uh, I didn't buy there to live by a racetrack. And, and I don't mind that. I spent last weekend in Cali Indian, Nevada. My grandsons were racing. It's wonderful stuff. But that was on the mountain. It wasn't in my backyard. There's got to be something you guys can do to help us. We shouldn't have to live this way. When we were there before he was and we got one person's commercial appetites. Or taking away the rights and privileges and, and peace of mind with the rest of the community. Thanks. I appreciate what you do when you do it, even if it's slow. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Brayden Belmont, I work in the assessor's office. I just want you guys to know, she spoke to the green belt. We are actually in the process of doing the audit on him. Me and the assessor will be out there on Friday conducting that, so. We have heard you, we want you guys to know like we're working on it, but as you know, government, we have rules we have to follow. That's why we're going through the steps. To. Audit him.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You wouldn't, if you was doing something wrong, you wouldn't want somebody to come in immediately and say. We're going to put you in jail. You know what I'm saying? It, it, it's a process. It takes time and I, and, and I. I have a hard time with government too because I always worked in the private sector. So you can do things faster. Government takes a little time. You have to give them those thirty days and ten days and that type of thing. So we are working on all of the issues though.
We appreciate that. I, just to. Comment on that, he's got an attorney in St. George and he's trying to. He's the one that's going that avenue. We're patiently waiting. We appreciate the update. Thank you so much. That just makes us feel better that something's going on, but he's already, you know, like I said, he's acquired this big time attorney and. St. George and written us all these letters. We're afraid to even go to the county anymore. I'm afraid to even talk to Reed or talk to Terry because I'm going to get thrown in jail and I've done nothing, nothing.
Please don't, please don't feel that way at all.
That's his intent.
Well, and it probably is.
He sent it to the county, so they know.
It doesn't, it doesn't make it, you know.
But he's trying to aggravate us by taking our pictures so that we'll respond. We refuse to respond, but. His intent is that we no longer go to the county and report him because that's where he got our names evidently, or off my sign, whatever, but. Like I said, he's, he's going the bad avenue.
Off the property, right? You know, the part, property, you know, your plats, your names are on all of those.
Exactly, yeah, since.
So he didn't need to take a picture of you or anything else.
Oh, but he did. So yeah, like I said, he's intentionally trying to aggravate us now. So I'm just word safety and. Appreciate all you guys, we really do. And thank you for any update you can give us. So we can sleep a little bit at night. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Bill Stewart and I do want you to know that I spoke to, uh, Dan Jessins. And he said, oh, he told me he was only going to put e-bikes on that property. And the mayor through my friend that she's talked with the mayor and the mayor said, oh, he told us it's only going to be e-bikes on that property. There's no difference between e-bikes and, and, uh, pit bikes. They're, they both race in the same conditions. My kids are, uh.
They make a different noise.
They make a different noise.
No noise.
That's all they do is they make a different noise. I looked up and there is an e-bike that will go seventy-one miles an hour and you can buy it on the internet. They're designed for kids that are five to fifteen years old, but, but they're now, e-bikes are starting to be very popular. With young adults and seventy mile an hour, going around in circles with five or six people racing is, is very dangerous. I'm concerned. That you as a county or might become liability or have some liability if some kid gets hurt. They sue where the money is. They, he's got some money and the county is the number two person that they would name on this suit for liability. If some kid gets in a hospital for a broken neck or a broken back, the parents can't pay for that. The only thing they can do, they have no choice but to sue. So I think you do have to be a little concerned about that.
Thank you. Any other comments?
And while he's coming up, if you guys could follow up with me, let's, let's work on getting that process started. This week, I'm gone the last part of this week, but the next couple of days I'll be around. Um, and let's, let's at least get that started. Um, yeah.
The clerk's office downstairs.
Started. Um, yeah, it, 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 there's not, it doesn't happen all that often, so there's not like a standard bit of paperwork to fill out, but we can. I've got enough information to maybe get rolling, but maybe get down there and give them a little bit of information like your names and stuff and. Um, and, uh, we can, we can get it started. There's a whole bunch of noticing requirements and stuff that we have to do.
Okay.
My name's Harold Lindisdruth and I live over in Red Canyon also. I just want to come up and say I got one of those letters from the attorney they're talking about. I've never met this man, nothing, but I went in and talked to Terry and Joe. And after that, this letter came to me. Me and Joe and his family got him, nobody else. So somebody in that office is giving our name out for coming in talking. Think you ought to know that.
So it's public record, your, the, the ownership.
You go in the office?
No.
That's where I was.
And the land that you own.
The land.
He doesn't know who I am, so why didn't everybody get a letter?
Well, I don't know.
See, that's my point.
I can pull up my Onyx Hunt map and, and.
Know exactly who you are.
Was that he, just a certain people spoke with these guys and that's the names.
I don't think anybody from the county's given your name.
There were only three letters, me, Joe and his wife. Now. Everybody there would have got one. I'd have said, okay, you're right. I thought that way, but it had to be, and it was like a day or two after I left the office.
I don't, I don't think that they're giving out your name.
Somebody did because to come to my house.
That's public, public notice.
Registered, so it's like he went out of his way to make sure I got it.
Yeah.
So that's ridiculous. I've never talked to him face to face.
That's what lawyers always do.
Yeah, but I didn't talk to him face to face. That's the part that's weird.
Yeah.
But he's just, like Michelle said, he's aggravating everybody purposely.
And I, I'm sorry, I missed, who, who did you speak with at the county?
Pardon me?
Who did you speak with at the county?
Well, I talked to Joe and I talked to Terry. Terry was my inspector when I built my house.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move forward and now convene as the Iron County Community Development and Renewal Agency. And go to number four, consideration of tax increment reimbursement for Cove Mountain Solar Plant and Cove Mountain Two. Community reinvestment project areas for the two thousand twenty-two year. Danny Stewart. Is Danny still got a pulse?
Danny, he does have a pulse. He's actually not with us. He's downstairs, um, with those folks from Juab County that we talked about. He asked me to go ahead and present this.
Okay, thanks.
Um, basically, uh, Cove Mountain has met all the requirements. They're in operation. They've given the reports to Danny. Um, and they're, I guess I could pull them up in the packet, but they're, but they're sufficient, so.
We just need a motion on it. I would, uh, move to approve a tax increment reimbursement for Cove Mountain. Solar, uh, plant, uh, power plant and Cove Mountain Two Community Reinvestment. Project area for the year, uh, twenty twenty-two year.
Second. Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries. We'll now reconvene as Iron County Commission and, and discuss. And possible approval of a contract between Leighton Construction and Iron County for the construction of an Iron County Sheriff's Complex. You, who wants to talk about that? Do you want to, Commissioner Blake? Sam?
Sam, Will.
Well, I do want to give some input in just saying thank you to each of our commissioners and to John. And all the other staff, sheriff and, and your staff for participating in this process. Uh, you all went through, you asked all the right questions. Um, you worked well with Leighton. You vetted the things that you were concerned about, so. Um, from the, the office of the Iron County Attorney, we feel comfortable with the contract as it's been presented. Uh, we've talked about, uh, contingencies moving forward, what needs to happen, uh, what changes may need to be made going forward, but as is written right now, it kind of builds. Uh, it builds everything in that we need to be concerned about with respect to, uh, at least the pre-construction phase and we'll, we'll get to the construction phase as we do. Um, but if there are any questions from the commission, I'd propose that we, uh, we execute this document and get the ball rolling.
Yeah, we've gone over and over and over it several times and, and I think we.
And I think that's been important.
It has been important.
We hired outside counsel to look at it and, and consult with us on, on something this important and this big and, uh, and.
It's a big project.
Attorneys look at it and we've all looked at it and had questions and. I think, so I think we vetted this very well.
Been carefully vetted.
Absolutely. Well, I would move for approval of the contract between Leighton Construction and Iron County for the construction of the Iron County Sheriff's Con, Complex be approved.
I'd second that.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Thank you. Number six, discussion of possible approval of funding from Iron County for the Iron County Care and Share. Sorry you had to wait forever.
So we just had you come back.
Yes.
So like we just said in the, the, should I take it then?
Yeah, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead.
In the, in the previous, um, we're building a jail and we don't know quite where we're at with that. I mean, it's going to cost a lot of money. We're a little nervous about, about giving other monies out. But we feel like that we should challenge everybody in the county. To, to give to the Care and Share and, and we think that's very important. And, uh, Paul and I will give, give you a couple of checks for five hundred dollars. And, uh, we felt like that was important to, to, uh. Um, give to the Care and Share and I hope that the rest of the community will do that. Right now, because of the situation we're in, we felt like, you know, we're not. We're just not, uh, ready to do that right now. Maybe later we can do that, but we, we, we've got this huge big project right now. And until we do that, we really don't feel comfortable about giving those kind of monies out.
Okay.
So we appreciate you coming though and, and, uh. I, I would encourage everybody to give to the Care and Share because it's a great, it's a great thing in our community and it's important.
And, and I'd like to address this again at budget time.
Same.
Um.
That's what I was going to say too.
I'd, I'd like to address it at budget time when we, we did, we budgeted so tight this year with, uh, I mean, we. With providing, uh, we, we implemented a new pay structure, uh, which kind of took away our, I'm not going to call it fun money, but. I mean, really took, took away kind of our, our, our financial cushion. Uh, but I would really like to address this again and our, our budget season kicks off, uh, when Luke, except, uh, October-ish. So if you, have, do you know, have you met with, have you met Luke Little? He's our new county, uh, county auditor. Um, if you would stay in contact with him, get his contact information, we'd really like to address this again at budget time. So that we can make a plan moving forward.
One thing we did in Cedar City is we had, we had, uh, you and, well, people in your position come every year asking for money. And I think we actually did a line item budget.
Yeah.
In, in our Cedar City, they have one, right?
Yes, they do.
Like five thousand or?
I think it's ten thousand.
Ten now, okay.
Yeah.
They might have been five back when I was on the council, but, uh, but I would like to maybe discuss with other commissioners the. The appetite to just do a line item and, and then every year it's automatic. And that's something like, like Commissioner Blake and Wood said, we can discuss at a budget time.
Okay, I, I would say that if we're going to rely on the community, our, our community donations have dropped to like fifty percent of what they were.
Really?
Uh, pre, pre-COVID, right?
That's good to know. I mean, I, we, you know, sometimes people forget those type of things and, and this is a good way to get. Your message out there that, that you really do need those.
Yeah.
Those funds.
We've got, we've got the media here, Mr. Richards, um, with the newspaper. Maybe he could help us with an article and, and challenge the public. I've made a couple of calls before this meeting and challenged a couple more people to, to donate. So we'll, in our, you know, as we, as we go out and, 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 and moving around and stuff and talking to people, we can, we can continue with that, but maybe Jeff could help us with. A challenge to the public.
And Commissioner, one of the things that, um, they sort of, they actually spoke up when we had our first CDBG hearing. Um, and I, I wonder if maybe the, we could consider supporting maybe an application on there, be, you know. The county has to support applications to CDBG for, for groups like this. And I wonder if we could maybe in, in future cycles, consider, uh, where you've got the connection with, with Five County. And work with them and, and see if. Like I told you, the answer's always known unless you ask.
Right, right.
But, but, but we might be able to, we, Iron County might be able to consider supporting.
John, I could, I, I work in the Five County arena, so I could contact some of my people down there.
Yeah, I'm, 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 Kim and I, Kim Cooper and I are, we work together quite a bit.
Okay.
As organizations kind of serving people in the area, so.
Okay, very good.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, number seven, ratification of the sale of a two thousand nineteen Ford Mustang. Wade?
Good afternoon.
Is this your personal car, Wade?
What's that?
Was this your daily commuter, this Mustang?
What color is it? I was just curious.
It's gray.
It's what, gray?
So.
I love Mustangs myself.
So it was a ratification. We haven't actually done it yet, so it'll be more of an approval today.
Yeah.
So we, we found a better deal, so we're trying to work through it and.
Get something else.
So, yeah.
All right, I'll entertain a motion.
Uh, I would move for approval of the ratification of the sale of a twenty nineteen Ford Mustang. There's the VIN number and, uh.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to second. All in favor?
Aye. Thanks.
Thank you, Wade. Number eight, discussion of possible approval of an agreement with Southern Utah University to utilize the inter, intergovernmental, that's a big word. Internship Cooperative Program to assist in restoration of the Vermillion Castle picnic area, five mile.
Mike.
Good afternoon.
Hello.
This is Josh Anderson. He's with SUU. And what we're talking about here is, is utilizing the, uh, SUU's intergovernmental internship. Uh, cooperative program to help us with the, uh, five mile restoration. Uh, right now, the, they're entering into an agreement with Cedar Brakes to where it's a four-man crew, four.
Yep.
And a crew boss that will allow them to work part-time up there and then two or three days down in, in the, uh. Five mile picnic area to help with the restoration and things that we're doing there. We hope this is a good idea. And that it fits because it, it allows somebody to be there that oversees what this group is doing. Uh, versus Bryce and I trying, and have to be up there all the time overseeing it, so.
Yeah.
So, uh, I, I'm hoping that it'll work really good. So I, I'm hoping that it'll work really good. Anyway, we have an agreement that between Southern Utah and Iron County that allows us to enter into a, provide funding for that agreement. I think it.
Was it 18,000?
Yeah, it was 18,000.
760, I think.
760.
760, good. I read through that last night.
And that covers their expenses as far as wages they pay that they would work on us and also.
And that's come from a grant, right?
And that comes from a grant.
From a grant, yep. So that doesn't come from.
Yeah. And so that's what we're proposing. I don't know whether you've got any questions for, for Josh.
I think it's a great program. Seems like just a great fit and, and go back and forth and that, I think it's a win-win. When Mike was telling me about it the other day, I thought, it's great.
Well, I, I don't know when they're going to start up at Cedar Brakes.
Might be a while. Ten, ten feet of snow.
It might never melt. Might start snowing again.
But anyway, that, that's proposal is to enter into this agreement.
Okay.
Very good.
I sent it through Sam and Sam didn't have a problem.
Okay, great. Thank you.
All right.
Entertain a motion.
I'd move for, I'd move for possible approval. I will move for real approval of an agreement with Southern Utah University to utilize the intergovernmental internship cooperative program to assist in restoration of the Vermillion Castle Picnic Area.
Second.
Been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Nice to meet you.
Thank you so much. Thanks, Mike.
Yep, thank you.
Number nine, consideration to be a cooper, cooperating agency for development of the pro, pro, program.
Programmatic.
Programmatic.
Programmatic Environmental Impact Statement and Associated Resources Management Plan Amendments for Utility Scale Solar Energy Development on Public Lands.
What this is that the Biden administration has directed the BLM to conduct another programmatic EIS or environmental impact statement on the, on developing, developing or identifying areas where solar facilities could be built on public lands, on BLM lands. The first go around back in, in around 2010 through, through 2015 identified six areas in the West and he's gone back and say, we need more. So that's, that's where this is. I've talked to Reed. Reed works really closely with the solar companies and so, and also provides the permits for be able to, to build them and, and what they will do. And so we felt that it would be good if Iron County would be a cooperating agency. I reached out to them and they said yes and sent this MOU and it's a standard MOU that goes with all cooperating agency involvement in any EIS that they do. So that's what this is and my proposal, or my suggestion is that we approve it and that will allow Reed and I to work with this on a, on a larger scale.
Okay.
Can I comment on it?
Sure.
I'm one on the record that I am very, very against any solar that is on public lands. The reason why is because within the Taylor Grazing Act of 1934, FLIPMA, the Federal Land Policy and Management Act of 1976, it is mandated to have multiple use and that does not allow for multiple use. Now, I, I, that, those are laws from Congress and, and the new, these new things are just rules, right? Saying we want more.
These, this is actually an environmental impact statement that will identify areas where they can be built, where the rule is an overarching umbrella that says the BLM may do this and this and this and this. But this, this is actually identifying areas.
So it's, and, and I, and I'm glad that we'll be cooperating agent. I'm for that, but I'm very against because it takes it out of multiple use because you can only have one use when you have solar panels on public lands. And so that, that concerns me greatly. And, and on, on private land, we have more solar in Iron County than any place else, but, but on public lands, I'm very, very against it, but I'm just gonna, I, but I, but I'm glad that you.
I totally agree with your argument and, and we'll make sure that that gets expressed in our conversations.
Yeah.
With the BLM.
Okay, um, make a motion?
Sure.
Anybody? Okay. I.
If you don't feel comfortable voting for this Marilyn, you don't need to make a motion. Mike can make it. So if you want to vote no, you don't need to make a motion.
And what, what you're voting on isn't, isn't.
It's a cooperating. Yes.
It's.
It's so that they, so that we have a say.
Exactly.
Yeah.
To work with development of this, of this.
And if they're going to push it through, we need to have a say on it.
That's my feeling too.
Yeah. So I will make the motion. I would move to be a cooperating agent for development of the programmatic in, environmental impact statement and associated resource management plan amendments for utility scale solar energy development on public lands.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
We had it just along these lines, what Marilyn's saying. We had a, a producer that had cattle that they'd raised on sitler lands for years and they were kicked off because of, because they put solar on it.
And sitler is a little different.
And we, we hear these, we hear these things.
Oh yeah, and sitler is a little different.
Sitler is a little different.
If they sell their land, it becomes private property.
Yep.
And those permits.
And they can do whatever.
Are not valid.
Right. And I understand that, but it's just, it's just an example of what we face from the producers when these things happen.
Mike knows. Mike, we've talked about this many times and it, it is problematic with, with public lands because those should be multiple use and they can't be if they have solar panels on them.
We know we're talking to the choir. We're not trying to kill, kill the message.
It's just a fact.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you, Mike.
You'll get them to me so I can pass them on.
Absolutely, yes.
And discussion and possible approval of a grazing agreement between Ken Robinson and Iron County on APND D-968-4.
Okay, after some discussion, Mr. Robinson had, when the property belonged to Paul Lunt and before he passed away, he had put some triticale on there and that he had fenced it and it was good for weed abatement for the, for the property and, you know, good free feed for him that he had kind of worked himself to develop several years ago. So this basically just continues, this is grazing on the property that has been purchased for the county jail. And so this just kind of memorializes that we'll go for one more year. One of the clarifications that Sam made that if for whatever reason the jail is delayed, that this agreement can and will extend and that will help us as far as, you know, weed abatement and, and he'll get the feed out of it. But, and then when the time comes that we break ground, that will end the, end the contract or the agreement. So.
Should Braden might want to speak to this? And we wondered if there was a, there was no money changing hands?
Yeah, no.
Yeah, okay.
But just mutual benefit.
Okay.
Just for clarification, I called and talked to Brady Kelsey for, from the Utah State Tax Commission and he talked to Gerald Osborne, who is the real property manager of the Utah State Tax Commission. And he, he informed us that for something like this, the land is treated the same as it is BLM or Forest Service land. You can go into an agreement for grazing purposes and you don't have to pay a privilege tax if you're already an exempt entity like Iron County is. So.
So explain then, if you could clarify, because when we acquire road rights of way that are in green belt, we've had to pay rollback.
Yes.
In those situations.
So the rollback.
Is it because we already own it?
We already did the rollback.
Explain how that's different?
Yes. So it's, it's twofold. We already paid the rollback on the previous owner's land. So we purchased the land.
On this transaction?
Yeah, this transaction. So we purchased the land and then the rollback was paid for the private.
Okay.
Ownership entity. But the reason that you have to pay a rollback when we purchase land for a road is because it was private and now it's going to exempt. So we have to pay that rollback.
You bet.
So hopefully that clarifies.
And we won't be applying for additional green belt. I mean, we're, we, Iron County are exempt. This is a, yeah.
Yep. Since your rollback's paid, you won't have to apply for any green belt to void rollback or anything.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that clarification. And that's it. That's just a, it's a mutual, mutually beneficial agreement.
And a motion?
Okay, I'll move to approve the grazing agreement between Ken Robinson and Iron County on APND D-968-4 as described.
Second.
All, or, it moved in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carries. Eleven, discussion and possible approval to terminate agreement with Zion's Bank for municipal, municipal advisory services. Do you want to speak to that or who?
I can. Sam, did you have anything to add? I don't want to speak out of turn is all.
No, I could give you the general understanding of the procedure for this, but it just looks like the county's looking to approach a different financial advisor for this particular purpose. So we're just making sure we go through the proper channels to terminate the agreement we have with Zion.
There was a, a little bit longer notice period than we thought, once we got looking at the contract and, and so we'll actually, I'll get a letter drafted and sent off today and then there'll be a 60-day period and then we can look at getting the other one on the agenda. So does that meet with what you understood?
Correct, yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I would move for an approval to terminate agreement with Zion's Bank for multiple, for municipal advisory services.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Twelve Personnel, Jennifer.
I'll cover items 12 A and D first before I turn my time over to Bruce for number, or E, I guess. In the Attorney's Office, Alexis Sunderland was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting selection process to backfill the vacant full-time legal assistant effective May 1st, 2023. In the Sheriff's Office Patrol, Gary Orton has been selected to be rehired as the part-time reserve deputy effective May 1st, 2023. In the Road Department, Trevor Johnson was selected from the most recent competitive recruiting and selection process to backfill the vacant full-time roads maintenance position effective May 1st, 2023. And then in the Tourism Parks Department, Kelton Reed was selected from the most recent competitive selection process to fill the seasonal maintenance technician position effective May 1st, 2023.
Okay. Any questions?
I will move for approval of agenda items A, B, C, and D in Personnel as presented.
Second.
It's been moved in second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. And then E was placed on the calendar for, upon the request of Bruce. So I'm going to turn my time over to him.
Thank you. Bruce Anderson, Iron County Public Work Director. I'm here to beg, plead, whatever I've got to do to hopefully get more money. Um, Public Works, as you know, has been bleeding for a while. We're down four employees. Well, today I guess we just got three. In the Road Department, we're down two in, in the landfill. And it's really getting hard. There's a, a new federal law that makes it really super hard to get a CDL. That's a commercial driver's license. That was implemented in March of 2022. We used to, could hire people and say, hey, we're going to train you. And it was on the job training, which was a great idea for us. I'm not sure why it ever got changed, but, but they changed it. And it's really getting hard to hire CDL drivers. Because of that, there's a couple of things that we need to go over. One is we've interviewed people back and forth. We've hired, we hi, we've hired some that were trainees. They didn't work out at the landfill. One of them left right before we was probably going to have to terminate him. And just, just to clarify, for the, for the Road Department, let's start there. There's 270 miles of paved road, 420 miles of gravel road and 288 miles of dirt road that need to be maintained and being four guys down really, really hurts. With that, in conjunction with the winter that we've had, we've got some roads that are in awful poor shape. And then for the landfill, as you guys know, we're, we're, we're the largest growing county in Iron County and there's just, every day there's a new can being produced. Last, a week ago today and a week ago yesterday were some of our biggest days. We were over, what'd I tell you? I can't remember what we was.
It was the biggest day that the landfill had ever gotten.
Yeah.
In those Monday and Tuesday of last week.
So it, and that was just on a Monday and Tuesday is quite rare for that. I don't remember what the, what.
Is that associated with the Cedar City cleanup?
No.
Where they send their stuff?
There's a separate.
Take it to the bullet pit.
And they don't, yeah. Yeah. In fact, you'd think it'd be down because of the Cedar City cleanup because it goes to a different spot. It's my proposal, and this is based on what other counties have done. I went to a, a conference last week and it's not just our county that this is going through, but it'd be my proposal that anybody that is currently using a CDL as part of their job be, be moved up two steps. Two steps. So that would go from, that would, that would put a new hire from 1795 to 19, 1979, which is still not the greatest, but it's, it's got to help. It's got to help. Everybody we've interviewed said, I just can't make the jump for less than $20 an hour. So that's what I'm proposing, asking, begging. I don't know how to put that politely, but that's what, do you have any questions? Oh, funding. Okay, go ahead.
Come up.
Come up to the mic. Could you state your name?
No.
So I, I know that he's having a real hard time hiring people. So I understand moving the starting wage up, but I know in our study, we kind of moved everybody up where we felt that was fair. So just wondering why we would increase existing employees when we were not going to increase anyone?
Because then it, it would compress everyone else.
The longest driver I've had there, well, with the exception of Hoyey, is one year. Cannon got hired in, Cannon and Garrett got hired in May of last year and they're the longest drivers we've had. If you increase the hiring wage, the new people are going to make more than the other five that are there. That's why the funding of this, I think that we can get creative. The legislature, the Utah State Legislature has given a one time 50%. We're going to get 50% more in B funds for now. And then there's a plan in place for gas tax to go up. That's starting really soon, as you two know.
I think it's a sales tax.
It's a sales tax on gas.
SB 175.
Um, so it won't, none of the, none of the funding would come out of general fund except for, I believe there's, there's four other CDL drivers in other departments that would probably, I would say would deserve the same thing. I don't know all that, but. And then this is something that the legislature's worked years on. They've been trying to do this for a long time. How to fund roads. It's not, it's not the only, we're not the only road department that's bleeding. It's not the only road department that can't get things done. It's statewide. The state has been working on this for, I believe it's three years, massaging this down to come up with more money to get to the, to get to the, you know.
Part, part of, part of that issue is the metropolitan areas, Salt Lake and the bigger counties come down and recreate down here and then tear up our roads and then we have to fund them. And it's, it's really hard in a rural county to keep up with roads on, on the lesser amount of money.
With that. With that, and the new federal law with CDLs, it's just getting hard.
It's just killing us, yeah.
Amen. Landfill is an enterprise fund. There's money there to cover what, what would take that. That total, I believe Jennifer worked it out for me.
Was that, is that this total number, this 200,000, is that?
212,000. That'd be, that'd be with.
Is that the enterprise too, or just the road department?
That's everything.
That's everything. So some of it won't, it wouldn't be that. And some of it would be other departments, a couple of other departments it would affect.
I think it affects Wade's Department and Engineering Department.
Got it.
So.
Yeah.
That's, it shouldn't affect general fund money to that extent, but that's what it's going to ultimately be to the county.
That's total, yeah.
That's total.
Okay.
Cut to the mic.
I'm sorry.
Oh.
I just never wanted to seem like that I'm ever against anybody getting an increase because that is absolutely not the case. Especially in our world of inflation right now, but, you know, I'd just like to see everybody.
I know, and I wish we could afford to. You know that we would, yes, yes.
It's really hard.
We know that.
So I did do, just for, for her benefit, let me tell you what I did do. Is I talked to the counties around and found out what their pay structure was. Washington County is, Washington County starts out at 22 an hour. Kane County starts out at 22 hour. Beaver starts out at 21 and a half. And, oh, sorry, my bad. Kane County starts out at 2150, and Garfield starts out at 22.
So we're still below them, even with that.
What did, what Beaver was, what was Beaver?
2150.
Beaver and Kane?
Yeah, 22 for Garfield and Washington. That's what their guy, they've, they've had the same thing and gone up. Any other questions?
And they'll also get their step and grade, and everyone will get that, and if we can afford it.
A lot of this, I've thought a lot about this, and Bruce had this on the agenda a while back, month or two ago. You know, I mean, I've, I'd heard of people slowing, and maybe, you know, there'd be some job layoffs and the market might increase, but it just hasn't. And I just got a text this morning from the mayor. His granddaughter was up to the sea watching the lightning last night, and the road in Right Hands Nazir, you've told me, has fallen off. It's, there's a big crack and the water running in it. We've just got, I was out checking on the water, the recharge basin down at Quichpaw Canyon last night, run out, and, you know, there's, there's parts of that Chipsville Road out there that's got issues. And there're just lots of, and we're down four, three or four employees. This is, this is a really tough one for me, but it's, it's just a matter of supply and demand with CDL drivers right now. And that's why we've tried to restrict this to just somebody that's got a CDL that's actively using it. And that's, that's the way that, in my mind, I could justify this and vote for it.
So I've, I'm not, I, I guess like Nicole said, I, I would never stand in the way of, of employees getting more money. I have had, and just for the record, I've had several department heads contact me that are very against this and plan to come and make the same argument to the, to the commission. I struggle with this a little bit because when, you know, we, we fought really hard and used up all of our extra money to implement a step and grade process, and at that point said, please don't ask for anything for a year until we see how this is running.
It's been a year.
Yeah.
We, you know, and I, I, I'm not going to throw Shalon under the bus.
And I, and I feel for Shalon.
Well, because Shalon didn't, Shalon didn't approach me with this problem. This is something that we talk about fairly regularly, because I'm the liaison to the jail. But as of June 1st, they're going to be down six, plus they've got a bunch of other issues that are. Okay, on the jail side. I, I think, I think this is going to open a can of worms within the, within the county. But with that being said, I, like I said earlier, I think this is necessary, and I think that this is, I mean, I would never stand in the way of where we can, where we can justify certain things for certain employees. I feel like we're cherry picking a little bit, kind of against what we said that we were going to do in the first place. But with, you know, and there were, there were a bunch of people that contacted me and just wanted that on the record across the board for the county. That's, I, I told them that I would put those concerns on the record and have.
I get it, I get it.
Can I ask a question of Jen? From a holistic perspective, as far as us, before last year's increase and where we are now, like, you'd kind of had your head wrapped around how far or close different departments were from parity with the informal salary study that you did. Could you speak to that, maybe how, how, how the road or landfill or some of the administrative offices compared as far as being far from parity? Or especially law enforcement?
So when we did the step and grade, we did not, we knew that we were so far behind that we could not meet industry standard or even counterpart standard. So what we ended up doing for the step and grade was just bringing them up to the years of service within the step and grade, or within the beginning and, and rate of pay that we were already at.
Our own system.
Of our own system, which was already well below anybody else. Just off of everything that I've looked at and observed, countywide, we are the lowest paid county as far as starting wages for every department. The only one that's kind of close to that right now is law enforcement, but law enforcement is still low comparatively because we are hearing our counterparts are now matching UHP, which is considerably higher, somewhere around $5 and $6 an hour. Washington County is going to do that July 1st for their fiscal year. So we did have one that left just recently to go to Washington County, and she's getting a $6 raise.
And I think that, that we, we had, that employee was only with us for a year or less.
Less than a year, yes.
Less than a year, leaving us to go to Washington County for $6.
So, so to, to sum up.
Sum up, we are, across the board, every department is very low comparatively for our counterparts.
Okay.
And there was, so can I speak to that also?
Yeah.
I think the thing to realize is there was no comparative study. We just came up to where we was. So you said, was there that study? And there was no study.
Well, there was, there was a little bit of research as far as knowing what other, other.
There was some that came up, yeah.
And, and I know that some departments were a lot further from, if you want to call it, I'm saying parity, but, but yeah, how close to, to similar departments, whether it be finance or roads or whatever. So, but the, the best answer was which, which is what Jen gave was, well, we just worked within our own system.
Which I, I do know that we got that money from the legislature. We will be getting that money going forward. And, and that will help to offset that in the road department, yeah.
Should more than cover it.
As far as law enforcement, I do want to say we love our law enforcement people. But, but I, I really feel like this jail is, is a, is a big lift for the county. We've never had a project this big in the county, I don't believe. And, and I'm, I'm really hoping that with, with our new budget of, if we, in the, in the near future of ramping up, that, that some of that money's with the inmates that we will get. And, and we're renegotiating our contracts also with those, that we'll be able to get some raises in place going forward when we come up, Ken.
I wasn't planning on saying anything, but, you know, I've been dealing with this kind of stuff for 40 years. And one of the things that, that I've come to realize is that, you know, things happen at different points in time. And it's always nice when the commission looks at everybody as a total and says, well, we need to try to give a pay increase to everybody at, at this particular time. That's great when you're able to do that. But having just been through what we were just through here recently, you know, I had 50% of my office that was vacant. You know, because of, of the economic situation that we were in around the state with law enforcement in general. And, you know, sometimes I think that the commission needs to look at what the problem is right now and deal with the problem that is currently facing an officer or a department in the county and deal with that on a one-on-one basis. It's not always economically feasible to be able to give everyone a raise. And, you know, again, like you say, while I appreciate everything that the commissioners did for, for the county as a whole last year, you know, that's not always possible, but that doesn't mean that the road department isn't bleeding out. You know, they're not having trouble. It doesn't mean that depending on what some of the other counties do around us, that as a sheriff's office, we may not be in the same spot again. You know, one of the things that I'm very hopeful and I really earnestly believe is that with the new jail complex, that if we can maximize our contract housing, then not only can we pay for that facility and pay for the increased deputies that need to come into it, but we'll also have a cash bonus that we'll be able to go, go back into the general fund. And we'll be able to help address some of these issues along with our continuing growth and other things. But I think that, that sometimes the commission just needs to, to look at, you know, not, not what's in the best interest of everybody in the, in the county at the time, but what's in the best interest of those that are really struggling at that point in time. So I'll just leave you with that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Any more discussion?
I would say one more thing, that sometimes things come down from the state. We had one on our last agenda. We're mandated certain things. It costs the county money. This, this with the CDLs has come from the federal government. And they do not even look at what it would do to a county like in our size. It's devastating. It really is. And, and a CDL, if you think how devastating is for our county, but the whole United States, that, 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 that mandate, one mandate and regulation costs the United States from just him saying, you, you can't just take your test. You can, you can't read your book and take your test. You have to go for a month to go to school and do your driving and take your test to pass it. But, but that, but that mandate has cost the United States so much money, probably billions of dollars. And, and, you know, knowing what it's done to our county, but it's done to the whole United States. That's, that's sad. And, and they don't, you know, sometimes they, you know, legislatures don't look at that, but they need to, you know, so.
So I, one thing I did this last week was I called Brennan Wood at the SWAT deck and, and talked to Brennan. And I'd asked him before about this to help us out with CDL training, you know, maybe offer a night course. And he said they can't do the driving at night. And I said, well, what if you did the classroom at night? And then they do the driving during the day. And he said, hey, that might work. So it'd only be two weeks that have to take off for the driving, but then they could do the classroom work at night. So Brennan's looking into that right now.
He called me.
Oh, did he?
He called me and we had a conversation.
Oh, good, okay.
And I said I'd go meet with him and try to work.
We're trying our best to figure out a way to solve this problem. We've, we've, you know, and so, anyway.
It's a huge issue. We ready for a motion? I would move for approval of the presentation that, that Bruce Anderson made for the increase. And that is a 212,743.70.
I'll second it.
Been moved in second, all in favor? Jennifer, do you have something?
I was just wondering if we could have that effective the next pay period, so we don't have to do it.
Yes, yes, yes. Let's do it the next pay period.
Again, second.
Sorry, let's clarify before we move on. So today's the 24th. Are we talking the, would that be May 1st?
I should have had Betsy in here.
Sorry.
Yeah, yeah, probably.
Which would you say next pay period?
Is the start of the next.
Whatever the next pay period, yeah, that'll work.
That was when I believe Gary was going to start back with the sheriff's department. That was the approval was May 1st.
Oh, May 1st?
Yeah.
So it gets been moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I just want to say too that.
Here comes.
Oh.
Oh, April 30th, there you go!
Yes, thank you. Appreciate it. See, I knew I would say it wrong, so.
I just wanted to say this, and I'm not over, I'm not the liaison to the road department, but I just want to say how much we appreciate Bruce. Everybody in the county works really hard, we know, and we appreciate it. All, all of our employees are our greatest asset. But last night, we were walk, watching this radar come through, and, and I called Bruce, or Bruce called me and said, hey, you, you know, you watching this? And I said, yes. And he was driving back from Odina. I think it was 10 o'clock at night. He's been out there on Sunday night doing, you know, helping people, you know, be able to get through the roads. And there's never been a time that I've ever called Bruce, say, hey, can you move this trackle here so we could do a water project? Or help come fuel me up on this project? Or, or, you know, Bruce is just, he's just had a, had a can-do attitude. And he's a huge asset like everybody else is, but I just, I, I, this, this has not been an easy thing. I've thought about this, ever since this thing's come up, I've thought about it every single day and night. I've mulled this over and, and how hard it's going to be to do, but, but we've, we've got to help Bruce with his department right now. And I appreciate what Ken said with, with his comments.
I do too.
Sometimes we have to address what's bleeding right now. We're doing the best we can. We've got a huge, huge jail to build. We've, we spent all of our cushion last year, $2.4 million on trying to fix some of this. And in my mind, I thought we'd fixed a lot of it, but, guys, that's hard. This is a hard job. And, but, and I appreciate Jennifer and our HR and helping us through all these things.
Yes, she's, she's, she's as, as good as Bruce. When we call either one of them, they just, the staff has just been so amazing.
But just please know it was a county. We, we struggle with these decisions as a commission. It's not easy, so.
It is not easy.
You know, I've had several people, recently as I've talked to different departments, I've heard over and over and over again that our current HR staff is better than any other HR staff that they've ever had during the course of their employment.
They really are.
I mean, I really.
I would say that too.
I really hear that from a lot of people, how lucky we are to have, to have you and, you and Betsy as the team. I mean, they've really said that this is, it's interesting, the last conversation I had with someone that this came up said, these guys would never toot their own horn, and they would never, you know, self-promote. But, but just know how much the employees of the county really do notice how hard you and Betsy work. And it really is appreciated.
And that's as a commission, because you can call her anytime. She calls you right back, you know? And we have issues going on all the time with different employees and stuff. And it's, it, it really is a big deal, Jennifer. We really appreciate you.
Absolutely.
Well, and from my perspective, I have a fairly unique one because I work with risk management, you know, workman's comp, and, and a myriad of other ways that a lot of people don't get to. And you guys are just a joy to work with, so.
Well, and I'll say one more thing. You know, I've, I've, I don't know how to say this, but, you know, I've heard through the grapevine that there's been, there's been some people apply with CDLs. But they may not be the right fit. They may, we may get sued because these people don't necessarily know how to do their job. And, and, and so we've looked at those things. We've had people apply, but there's some that we just have had to overlook because we, it, it could cause some severe liability to our county with, when you're talking.
And their references are very important.
When you're driving big machines and heavy trucks and you make a mistake, and it's, it's a big deal. And so we have to be, you know, and I've, I've, and Bruce has had to talk to me about this. And, and, you know, I've said, Bruce, are we being too fussy? And, and Bruce has said, Paul, I will not hire this person because of the liability we could incur as a county. And so we've tried, you know, we've tried to wrap our head around this in every way we can, so, anyway, that's.
One more thing I have to. One more thing, I have to thank, I have to thank the Road Department with, along with Bruce and Justin and the landfill, because they're awesome. They really are great guys, and they, and they have just, they're just hard workers. They really are. And Bruce has told me several times, it's best, the best crews that he's had that we have working right now. Now, if we can get some, a few more new ones in to fill those spots, and they can, then, and they can, uh, you know, fit right in, then we'll be, we'll be thrilled, so.
All right, do we have any, any board, um,
I think we're.
Boards to talk about?
I do not.
No, not yet. I think we had one, but we.
We've got a.
Got anybody there yet for.
Vacancy coming up, but I think.
Craig.
Craig Lob, yeah.
Bob.
That was a long one. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Declare this meeting adjourned.
I didn't think it was gonna be that long.